Ms. Grijalva?
Here.
Dr. Gravosha?
Here.
Ms. Luna Rose?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Counts?
Here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, now we are moving on to the land acknowledgement statement and I can hear an echo. I'm not sure what that's about. Do you know how we can? I'm not sure, but I know your microphone has been a little bit closer.
Try that out. Okay. Land acknowledgement statement. So, our student is Ari Rae Andrews. Is she here?
Yes.
Hi Ari, I'm gonna go ahead and read your bio and then if you want to lead us in through the statement, we would appreciate it. So Ari Andrews is a 7th grader at Gridley Middle School. Ari is a member of the Tuhana Odom Nation. She is, and please correct my pronunciation Ari, she is Hia Sed Odam? Did I say that right?
Hia Chid Odam.
Okay, and on her mother's side and Tuhana Odom on her father's side. Ari got straight A's last year. She loves to play the viola and she has eight sisters and two brothers. That's a huge family. That's awesome. Ari hopes to one day be a lawyer. So that's all wonderful, wonderful things Ari, and if you could read the land acknowledgement statement, we would appreciate that.
On behalf of the governing board of the Tucson Unified School District, Ari Rae Andrews acknowledged that this school's buildings and faculties, the Tucson Unified School District, reaside on the ancestral homeland of the Tuhana Nation and the federally recognized tribal land of the Pastayaki Tribe.
Alright, thank you so much Ari. Have a good evening. Oh, I do, I love your background. Do you want to say something about that? Is that just a colorful background or does that have some sort of significance?
Uh, it's my mom's blanket that she got when she graduated law school.
Oh, that's awesome. Come from a family of lawyers. Big family. Okay, well, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, um, next we have Benjamin Harris for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Benjamin here?
Yes.
Hi Benjamin, I'm gonna read your bio and then you can lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
Um, so Benjamin Harris is a 4th grader at Davis Elementary. Benjamin has, is a bright student with many talents and interests. He loves to play soccer, go swimming, sing, and play guitar. He loves his dog Jake and he also loves to build Lego bricks with his younger sister and brother. That's awesome. Okay, Benjamin, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yo prometo fiereleidad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representa una nación bajo Dios inivisible con libertad y justicia para todos.
That's a wonderful treat to get, to get that in both languages. Thank you. Thank you Benjamin.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you Benjamin.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, um, Dr. Trujillo, do we have any agenda adjustments?
Uh, there are no agenda adjustments this evening, President Counts.
Alright, um, Dr. Trujillo, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, President Counts, governing board members, welcome back. I hope everybody had an absolutely wonderful Independence Day weekend and was able to take some time out. Welcome back Tucson Unified Community for our first governing board meeting of the new fiscal year here in, in July. So a couple of items to brief the community on, and the most exciting item is Class of 2020 graduation schedule now available. We know that parents and students have been waiting for the schedule to be published. The schedule is now available on all of the district's social media platforms and website. Find out what time your school has been scheduled for a Class of 2020 graduation. Graduations will be taking place on July 26th and July 27th. And so far, there are close to 800 Class of 2020 seniors that will be walking in the scheduled graduation ceremonies on both days at the Tucson Convention Center. Each graduate, each graduate has been allotted a limit of 10 tickets. So every graduate will have plenty of opportunities to invite loved ones and family members with the spacious TCC, 10 members, 10 family members, 10 guests per graduate. Will be a great opportunity for family and friends to participate in the festivities. Unfortunately, Tucson Convention Center is charging for parking, so we're gonna be very, very public about that in our advertisement and promotion of the event, so families are not caught off guard. Tucson High, Pueblo, and Choya have the largest amounts of 2020 graduates walking in their respective ceremonies. And due to the sheer size of the schools and the 2020 graduates, they will have their own ceremonies. Tucson High itself has almost 200 seniors that will be walking. Pueblo has, I think, like around 130 and Choya is closing in on like 150. So those three big schools will have school-specific ceremonies. And of course, Class of 2021 Summer Graduation will be July 27th at 7 o'clock PM at the Tucson Convention Center. We hope to see all of our governing board members there to celebrate the achievements of our Class of 21, 2021 graduates that will be walking after their completion of summer school. An update, July 20th, a big meeting for us next week. The administration will be making final recommendations to the governing board for all COVID-19 mitigation recommendations for schools at the, at the, for the upcoming school year. That will be the feature item a week from tonight. So the governing board will have an opportunity to provide direction, suggestions, any changes, voice any concerns, or any additional requests for those COVID-19 mitigation recommendations being put forth by the administration next week. We've been working closely with Pima County Health Department to put together what I think is a very, very solid set of recommendations that will guide our schools in the upcoming school year. Our recommendations will be made in the areas of student and staff travel, interscholastic programs and events, fine and performance arts programs and events, district and school level meetings, in-person and remote expectations for campus visitors and volunteers, and of course mitigation expectations for large-scale events like open houses, meet the teacher nights, kinder roundups, events of that nature as well. Uh, I want to remind the community that per action taken by Governor Ducey, the district administration and the governing board, we are prohibited from requiring masks for students. Uh, we were not to be requiring the masking of students at any point during the instructional day when they're in classes. Masks are now optional. Uh, I know that our governing board members and myself in the superintendent's office, we can, we're continuing to receive a lot of emails asking us to make masks optional. So I just want to make sure that those community members are aware that that action has already been taken by Governor Ducey and is effectively out of the hands of this governing board and this administration. Again, masks are optional for students, uh, effective, that was in effect July 1. It's effective immediately in summer school and of course, it's effective for the 2122 school year. We'll also be presenting our COVID-19 mitigation recommendations for food services and transportation all on July 20th. Uh, we are sharing these recommendations with principals this week so that they see our recommendations prior to next Tuesday night. Um, they'll be able to provide us any additional feedback before we come to the board with those finalized recommendations on July 20th. Just a reminder about SER III, just a quick update, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. As all of you know, we discussed at the June 22nd meeting, the district has been awarded $172.9 million over the next three years to support the district's recovery from COVID-19 and the transition back to traditional instructional programming. Uh, there is a requirement that we set aside 20% of the funds for academic recovery efforts that are research-based, best practices in both instructional pedagogy and for the teaching of social emotional learning. As of this date, we've already held two public forums. Uh, we have four scheduled. We had two well-attended forums for employees and community members already via Zoom where we were able to get a lot of feedback and suggestions from our community and from our employees on how they would like to see these dollars spent. Part of our presentation in August, when we come to the board for our final expenditure proposal, will include a summary of the feedback given by the community. And of course, we will be making those sessions available on our website as they were recorded. The administration, we are currently finalizing an expenditure proposal for SER III that will primarily consist of school-level capital projects for outdoor learning spaces. We did not address outdoor learning spaces as a part of SER II, we wanted to wait for SER III. So SER III will be predominantly a listing of capital projects for outdoor learning spaces from our schools. We will be presenting the expenditure proposal in the same style that we did for SER II where the governing board will have an exhaustive A through Z listing, school by school, of each particular capital project that's being recommended for approval along with cost and timeline for completion. That way, we maximize transparency, not only for our board, but for the public as well. The target date for this is going to be the second governing board meeting in August. By that point, we will have all of our projects approved, at least internally, before bringing them before the board, and we will have been able to effectively communicate with our principals to let them know what's been approved prior to bringing it forward to a governing board meeting. We are fast approaching the opening of the 2122 school year, so just here's a very, very quick overview of how enrollment is going for 2122. After a very, very successful summer school that saw over 10,000 students take advantage of summer school programming, enrollment for 2122 continues across the district at all of our campuses. So far, over 800 students have now selected the Tucson Unified Virtual Academy. We project that we will be well over 1,000 by the time we start school. Currently, good news, a good sign, I don't want to say that it's a definitive sign that, that we don't have to worry, but a strong sign that a, an enrollment recovery is on the horizon. Right now, as of this morning, the district enrollment is up 500 students over our reported 40th day of attendance for the 2021 school year that just passed. That's a very, very good sign that families are now starting to return to the district after the pandemic year. Peak enrollment season always occurs the final two weeks of July and then even the first week of August. There's always an insane mad rush to get into our schools. So we're looking pretty good right now in terms of how we're trending with enrollment overall. But we take the good with the bad. Though being up 500 students overall is really, really great for the district right now, we do continue to be concerned about kindergarten enrollment. It is a concern at the moment, it remains down by several hundred students. Typically, in this district, kindergarten enrollments happen a little bit later, so we're gonna be looking for the late July, early August rush for kinder. But right now, it is down compared to where it usually is at this point in the year. We are gonna continue to watch those numbers. Another bright spot continues to be the district's two-est, or the district's two newest schools, Innovation Tech and Wakefield. With over a month to go before the opening of school, or right around a month to go before the opening of school, both schools have doubled their enrollment already as compared to where they were in their inaugural year. So congratulations to Innovation Tech and Wakefield. I know they're still enrolling students. Both schools have an opportunity to triple the enrollment that they experienced during the inaugural year. So all really positive stuff so far for enrollment. We will continue to keep the governing board and the public abreast of how enrollment continues to shake out. I want to caution everybody with regard to enrollment to not really get too excited until we see the first 10 days of school pass. Uh, all of you that have served on this board know that the first 10 days of school are crucial because that's when we execute what are known as drops. Students that have either left us, moved out of state, out of the city, or opted for another school, have not shown up for 10 consecutive days, we get them off of our roster, we get more of a truer read on what enrollment is on day 11 and 12 of the school year. So we're optimistic right now, but we're cautiously optimistic and hope that this trend continues. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jean. We have a very, very special farewell video to a person who I think has been phenomenal in his support, not only for the Tucson Unified School District, but the principles of equity, diversity, and inclusion. He is a primary architect of the desegregation plan that has helped move this district so forward in so many ways since 2014. He is a legacy himself. He is a son of the district, he is a student of Ross Scrooge Elementary, he's the son of a TUSD educator, and he is not only an employee that walked the walk and fought for equity, justice, and diversity, he's also a parent that walked the walk with enrollment. All of his kids have attended TUSD schools and have never stopped attending TUSD schools. He is a proud alumni of the Tucson High Magnet Community where he routinely contributes its time, his time, to mentoring students over at Tucson High. Uh, we are sad but excited. We're sad to see Mr. Brown go, but we're excited that he's gonna be serving the citizens of Pima County and the residents of, of Pima County in a larger, more impactful way as he joins County Attorney Conover's Office as Deputy Counsel. So we put together a brief farewell video to Sam, whose last day is this week, and I want to turn it over before we, we cue the video, to Mr. Brown's original hiring administrator from 2010. During, um, General Counsel Ross's first stint as the district's general counsel, he hired Sam as a new attorney into the legal apartment. Uh, Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. I'm very proud.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. I'm very proud of Sam's work, and I just wanted to, to say to the community that the first time that we interviewed, that I interviewed Sam, he impressed me by saying that he really wants to make a difference. You know, you hear that a lot from candidates, job candidates, that want to go into public education, but, you know, we believe that Sam really meant it. And as Dr. Trujillo said, he not only talked the talk, he walked the walk. He, he has made a great difference in this district and community and we will miss him, but are very proud of him for this next step that he's taking.
Uh, hi, I'm Sam Brown, I'm legal counsel with Tucson Unified School District. I'm a proud graduate of Ross Scrooge Magnet Middle School from 1992. And while I was at Ross Scrooge, I benefited strongly from having a dual-language education, knowing about Mexican-American culture and history, being able to relate to people on a different level because I understand a little bit where their culture comes from and where they, where they come from.
And I believe we have Mr. Brown on the call to say a few parting words to the district he has proudly served for so many years. Mr. Brown?
Got me. Thank you so much. That was amazing. Um, I'm just, I'm just a, a, a piece of, of the team and it's just been such a pleasure and honor to work with, um, you know, past superintendents, board, board members, you know, who give their time tirelessly and volunteering, and just everybody in the district, from, you know, crossing guards, to the custodians, to the, uh, teachers, to principals, everybody locked over at lurk that sort of never gets, at the lead instructional center that sort of never get kudos or credit, but, um, you know, I see you and we all see you and, and the work that you do for our kids in Pima County. So thank you all so much, Dr. Trujillo. Thank you for, for the acknowledgement and to you all, this is amazing.
Thank you, Sam. You'll be missed.
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Grijalva.
Well, I, I want to say we're gonna miss you here in TUSD, but I get to continue to work with, of Mr. Brown in Pima County. So I'm really glad that his impact is going to continue on to a larger group of community members that are gonna benefit from, um, his expertise and his desire to continue to serve on the people of this community. So thank you for all you've done here in TUSD, Sam.
Sam, I just want to say thank you. You know, my short time, three years on the board, I remember my first meeting with you and you made me feel so welcome and a part of this very strong team focused on equity, inclusion, and educational excellence for all kids. Um, and that really shone through in, in my first meeting with you and just in everything that you did and all the ways that you've helped the district. Um, and so I think Pima County is very lucky to have you and TUSD was very lucky to have you for the time that you were with us. Um, so thank you for all the work that you've done over the years for all of our kids and our entire community. And, um, and thank you personally for ma- making me understand what a strong team I was coming on to and working, uh, being part of TUSD and the focus on equality, equity, and educational excellence for all.
President Counts, I close tonight with a very, very special acknowledgement of the passing of Ray Davies. Ray Davies is an internationally renowned Holocaust educator, human rights advocate, fearless advocate for peace in our world. Ray Davies has been living in Tucson since 1952 after serving proudly in World War II, serving the United States in Japan. Since that time, he's dedicated his life to Holocaust education in the state of Arizona and also nationally and internationally. He was a charter and founding member of the Educational Enrichment Foundation that now facilitates a luncheon that bears the name, bears his name in honor of his contributions to the state of Arizona and Holocaust education. We are sad to hear of his passing. As a Tucson Unified Community, we mourn his loss. We join his family in mourning his loss. And we join the Jewish community and not only the loss of one of their champions, but the loss of a champion for all of Arizona and all of Pima County. I'd like to take this moment to lead a moment of silence in honor of Ray Davies and his recent passing. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report, President Counts.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Trujillo. Um, Clerk Shaw, we're moving on to call to the audience.
Ms. Counts?
Oh, yes, Ms. Grijalva.
Can I just ask, um, Dr. Trujillo, something related to the superintendent's report? I just wanted to ask if there's any way that we could create perhaps a shuttle system for some families? Cause you know, we have schools that have a huge capacity for parking and, um, you know, perhaps maybe work with some of the high schools, specifically Tucson High, since it's so close.
We can do that. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Ms. Counts. Public participation at board meetings. During the audience call, the board clerk will recognize speakers and maintain order by setting appropriate limitations. The governing board is committed to the safety of the entire TUSD community. In order to observe the recommended safeguards for reducing the rate and spread of COVID-19, the following procedures related to the call to the audience portion of board meetings will be observed. All public comments for the meeting were accepted in written form. Public comments will be read into the record by the program coordinator of staff services to the governing board. Our staff will make sure each board member receives a copy. At the conclusion of the call to the audience, the governing board president will ask if individual board members wish to respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the board, wish to ask staff to review a matter, or wish to ask that matter be put on a future agenda by law. By law, at most two board members can address any single issue raised during the call to the audience and contents of this card are public information. Uh, the first letter is from Elena K.
I am a parent of two TUSD students, one of whom is too young to be vaccinated yet. I am writing as a concerned parent to ask you to require masks at schools until all students are at the very least eligible for the vaccine. Although the CDC has said vaccinated people do not need to wear masks, much of TUSD students are not eligible for the shot. This means as parents, we cannot protect our kids even if we want them vaccinated. It is dangerous to make masks optional. Many will not wear them and will be unvaccinated. The Delta variant is surging and expected to become the predominant stain here soon. Please protect our kids and require masks until they at least have a choice to receive their vaccine. Elena K.
Next is Gloria Valencia.
Dear TUSD Governing Board, I am writing to you today about keeping the mask mandate in all TUSD schools. As an 8th grader at Mant- at Mansfield Middle School, I feel that my health is being put at risk. Keeping the mask mandate in TUSD schools would, will decrease the risk of students contracting COVID-19 and potentially being hospitalized. Many students are in, who are in the 6th grade or under, are not eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. Keeping masks will help protect these students especially, as well as the students to receive the vaccine. Keeping masks in schools is important, not only because of poor ventilation in many schools, but also because masks decrease the risk of infection by 65%. Thank you for considering my opinion and I hope you will think about the students' health as well as teachers. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Gloria Valencia.
Judy Morellian.
Superintendent Trujillo, Board President Counts, Clerk Shaw, members of the board, and Mr. Ross. My name is Judy Morellian. I am speaking once again as the lead advocate for the TUSD School Librarian Restoration Project. Research, research shows that school librarians provide critical support to teachers and administration by recommending and teaching strategies and sources that develop reading comprehension and analysis of informational texts in all content areas. School librarians serve learning communities in the largest classrooms with the greatest number of resources, with the broad, broadest range of reading proficiency levels, in the widest variety of formats. We are certified teachers whose work can have an impact on the entire school. School librarians use Read Alouds and Book Talks to promote books and reading. When they model comprehension strategies such as making predictions and drawing inferences during these activities, they provide students with opportunities to learn and practice these essential skills for making meaning from text. Reading to learn is what the work of school librarians is about. Whether reading literature for pleasure or resources for information, students use the decoding skills they learn in the classrooms as foundational tools for making meaning from text. Reading to learn is where the school librarian's expertise contributes to students' success. Learning and practicing reading comprehension strategies is the reader's pathway to being efficient, effective, and critical users of ideas and information. In their role as teachers of reading, school librarians can directly and effectively document how their teaching and co-teaching help classroom teachers build students' reading proficiency. Our advocacy group remains hopeful that the TUSD board will once again approve five middle school librarian positions that were scheduled to be posted in the spring of 2020. We join with you Superintendent Trujillo and members of the board in efforts to achieve the ultimate goal of literacy learning equity across the district. Thank you, Judy Morellian.
Next is Linda Rothman.
As a TUSD resident and concerned citizen, I am against wage compression. Our workers have suffered enough and have, many have withstood the ravages of stress in their roles as workers. It isn't fair nor equitable to compress their wages. Respectfully, Linda Rothman.
And Dawn Stevenson?
TUSD broke the law on July 1st in regards to masking. Some of the sites still force masks on children. The staff did not want to listen to parents when the parents told them about the newly passed law stating masks cannot be mandated.
them about the newly passed law stating masks cannot be mandated, which was effective July 1st. I find it hard to believe that TUSD did not know about this newly passed law. Your management staff should have been proactive on June 30th as far as getting a statement released. Even after it was officially law, TUSD was still the last district in Tucson to make masks optional. I called several departments on July 1st to find out what TUSD planned on doing about the mask issue. I did not receive a callback until July 12th. Many parents wrote the entire board on July 1st regarding masks and the newly passed law stating they cannot be mandated. Most, if not all, parents only received a reply from one board member. This particular board member's replies can be considered unprofessional. Adelita has been very vocal regarding mask usage, yet we've seen her numerous times in public without a mask around people that aren't in her family. This throughout last year and current. There is no justification for this hypocrisy. Once you issue a rule, no one person is above the rule regardless of your position. If you are a leadership role, you should lead by example. I would like to issue a formal request in this board meeting. We do not want Adelita using her personal Gmail account for board-related issues. We do not know what security measures she takes to keep this information secure, nor is she in control as to what is emailed to her from a staff member or parent. Any email board members receive could potentially contain a minor child's information. I am not content knowing my kid's information could potentially be in her personal email account. She needs a district-issued email account. Many parents are calling for this board to be recalled and replaced as you have not represented our children. My children are not to be part of your control issues. You are not my children's medical provider, nor do I seek any medical advice from you. The board has many other issues they should be focusing on. Health advice is not one, nor will it ever be. Bottom line is, we are all responsible for our own health. We are never responsible for another. The parents will continue to monitor what is going on with the district and board. We are not going anywhere. Dawn Stevenson.
Next is Melissa Conroy.
Governing Board, my concern now, since masks are finally optional, is demanding cameras in the classroom. There should be a camera in every classroom and any parent should be able to access the footage whenever we want. We need to see, hear exactly what teachers are doing and saying to our kids. This past year of online school has been eye-opening with that, with what I have heard some of the teachers saying to my kids. We, the parents, will not go back to sleep and let you continue to dumb down our kids and put racist ideas into their young minds. I have seen, heard Randy Wingarten, the Teachers' Union President, incentivize the teachers to break the law and teach CRT. I have seen many videos of unhinged teachers stating that they will continue to teach CRT, or whatever name you want to call it, even though in many states it is against the law and most parents are strongly opposed to it. Do your job and protect our kids, or mine will not be there anymore. Melissa Conroy, mother of two kids in TUSD.
Next is Dr. Roberto De Ruc.
I am writing in support of the protesters outside of your meeting today and to express concern regarding item 17.1, designation of the Tucson Police Department and the Pima County Sheriff's Department as sole source providers of off-duty event coverage for school year 21-22. I received my PhD in education from the University of Arizona and am currently an assistant professor of education and reside within TUSD boundaries. I have three main points. First, ample research evidence has shown that police presence among students does not make them feel safer and can actually raise the likelihood of tragic events occurring. Police are never appropriate for school environments, including events. Second, Tucson Police Department has a terrible track record when it comes to their use of violence in the community, including several fatal shootings just this summer. Finally, given that this item is poorly conceived and justified, the money allocated for this item can be better spent to support school and staff better equipped to deal with crowds without putting students and their families in danger. If staff are not well-prepared for it, then the money can be used to train them, which is a win-win for students. Thank you, Dr. Roberto S. De Ruc.
And next is Bets Putnam-Hidalgo.
My name is Bets Putnam-Hidalgo, and I speak as a representative of CARE for TUSD. CARE urges the board to take the steps necessary to improve the reading scores and literacy of TUSD students. We sent you all a document outlining the steps that need to be taken. Provide a library-media center in each school staffed by a certified library-media specialist and an aide so that the faculty can remain open before and after school and during lunch and the LMS as the opportunity to work with students and collaborate with teachers, fund subscriptions, new electronics, and new physical reading material annually, and finally, fund a library-media center director to coordinate these efforts and advocate for them. The document we sent includes comparisons to A-rated districts nearby in areas with more resources. But do not fall into the trap of thinking that the problem is just poverty. It's not. The problem is TUSD. TUSD literacy rates, as measured by standardized ELAs tests, are lower than those of nearby districts with similar levels of poverty. The current strategy is not working. While administration claims to support library-media centers, overall, they aren't being funded and without a budget to purchase new and current materials, materials including not just books, but computers, printers, interactive whiteboards, et cetera, how will be able to keep our students interested and engaged in reading? Or keep their skills up to date to better compete with other students? Please fund these items this year. In this budget, our kids can't wait. Bets Putnam-Hidalgo.
Next is Dolores De Vera.
Board members and administrators, this is a request that you review retention stipends and the learning space stipends so that those of us who are full-time subs for the district receive some equity. I watched the April 13 presentation on learning space stipends, transition stipends, and retention stipends. The governing board approved those stipends on the same night that they were presented and thus could not benefit from public feedback. And since you did not recognize the union for subs, we are not privy to any details before the plan was presented, and we could not provide feedback to administrators. When I watched the presentation, it said half-time to full-time employees who returned would get a $1,200 retention stipend. It said long-term subs would get a $1,200 retention stipend. It said subs and some of those positions who work very seldomly would get $300. I've been a full-time sub eligible for health insurance for years, and I almost always start the year off as a long-term sub. So I thought I'd get the $1,200. But Ms. Hoiser told me otherwise. She said the only subs who will qualify for $1,200 are those who were in a long-term position when the year ended last year, who then take the very same position as a long-term sub the next year. Very few, if any, subs will qualify for $1,200 because vacancies don't normally span over two years. And when do they? And when there was a sustainable sub, a principal wants that, those are the times when the appropriate thing to do is offer that sub emergency certification and a full salary, not a $1,200 stipend. The nature of being a full-time professional sub is that you are willing to go where the needs are that match your skills and the openings change year to year. Long-term subs work more than 40 hours per week, but most who step in for the district to be challenging and thankless jobs will only be eligible for a $300 retention stipend. I am asking that you review the retention stipends so that any sub who last year worked 90 days or more be eligible for the same $1,200 stipend as other returning half-time to full-time employees. 90 days is equal to a half a normal school year, which is 180 instructional days. I think you should also review the learning space stipends so those who were full-time proctors get a better deal than what they got. According to the board packet, about 30 employees received the $500 stipend. Some of them were full-time proctors for all three quarters. I know this because they contacted me and were unhappy about the inequity. I'm asking you to review the records of just those 30, and if they were actually full-time proctors or onsite subs, award them a more equitable stipend. Dolores De Vera.
Next is Lillian Fox.
TUSD consistently ties for the lowest rates of English-language arts proficiency or has the next to the lowest rate of proficiency of any school district in Tucson. That means most TUSD students were not reading and writing at grade level even before COVID. In 2018-19, 61% of third graders were not proficient. Proficiency didn't get much better in the next two years and then nosedived in sixth, seventh, eighth grades, where 73%, 74%, and finally, 77% of TUSD students were not proficient at reading and writing. This is catastrophic failure to educate the students entrusted to TUSD. This is like a five-alarm fire. Why is TUSD failing and what's being done to reverse course and educate students? Part of the problem is poverty. 62% of TUSD students qualify for free and reduced meals, but Flowing Wells, where 73% of students qualify, far outperforms TUSD at every grade level. Low-income students' families who need free and reduced meals are not likely to have money to buy books. Public schools can overcome the lack of books and greatly improve all students' educational outcomes by providing students with easy access to engaging books and library-media centers at their schools. TUSD has done just the opposite of what students need. In 2009-10, TUSD quit funding its library-media centers. In 2014, TUSD laid off all its elementary, middle, and K-8 library-media specialists. Only the high schools got to keep theirs, but the lack of funding virtually eliminated access to new books and electronic databases. You would think with the educational disaster and many millions in ESER money, TUSD would hire more library-media specialists and fund the library-media centers. Not hardly. The 2022 budget book has eliminated one of the 15 remaining library-media specialists. Now only 14 of TUSD many schools have a library-media specialist. The 2022 budget book has only $162,115 budgeted for books, periodicals, and media. That's only 35%, as much as the $460,869 budgeted for advertising. Worst of all, the money budgeted for books and media is not going to the school's library-media centers. Instead, the money is going to departments. TUSD eliminated its category of professional books and media and has lumped them together in the same category as schools, books, and media. Now, the professional books and media for the engineering law, purchasing, food services, finance, tech services, and the superintendent are included, making it appear schools are getting more money. For example, for each of the last four years, the superintendent's office has gotten $1,000 per year, or nearly $1,000 per year every year.
Excuse me, Ms. Espana. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Next is Amy Sonera.
Governing Board, I am writing to advocate for cameras in the classroom. There should be a camera in each and every classroom, and any parent should be able to access the footage whenever we want to find out exactly what teachers are doing and saying to our kids. Online schooling has shown that parents were unaware of what was actually being said and taught to our kids. We have the right to direct our children's education. Please consider directing funding to this very important matter. Thank you, Amy Sonera, mother of two kids in TUSD.
And last is Gustavo Peru.
Good morning. This email is in regards to the changes proposed at TUSD's board meeting, specifically the proposal to designate the Pima County Sheriff's Department as the sole source providers of off-duty event coverage for 2021-2022. The idea that there should be an increased police presence or presence at all at school events is inherently flawed. The presence of police on campus grounds allows for security issues, confrontations, public disturbances, et cetera, that would normally be resolved by de-escalation and community or parent involvement to be turned into criminal issues, effectively ensuring that any student involved becomes subject to the school-to-prism pipeline. School events need security that will focus on resolving issues without turning them into criminal matters. In addition, as indicated on the agenda, this measure would cost the district $64,000, an amount that could do a lot more good either being redistributed to areas or programs in dire need of support, or being used for school event security that will minimize the chances of schools entering any criminal system. The proposal to make PCSD the sole providers of event security cannot in good conscience be passed if we are truly keeping our students' safety and well-being in mind. Gustavo Peru.
And that was the last call to the audience. Ms. Counts.
Thank you. Dr. Trujillo, did you want to make any comments?
Yes, I have a couple of comments to make. There was a call to the audience referencing the budget book and a very paltry amount of money spent on books and periodicals. I want to remind the public and the board that the monies in the budget book only reflect MNO dollars, maintenance and operation dollars. They do not include the hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions of Title I monies and other federal grant monies that are spent on books, periodicals, and instructional resources to equip classrooms across this district. And I want to remind the public that the information that we're seeing tonight with the public hearing is strictly related to the maintenance and operations budget, non-inclusive of federal dollars that come through with Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, or ESER.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. Any other board members' comments? I'd like to ask something to be put on a future agenda.
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Grujhaeva.
I would like legal advice regarding mask use in our schools. And should the district, I mean, I know that we have a law passed, but should the district, because, you know, the Delta variant is up higher here in Arizona, and it's here in Pima County, and our elementary school students do not have an opportunity to vaccinate, what would the ramifications be to the district should we say, in schools, like elementary schools where nobody has the option of getting the vaccine, if we were to ask people to continue to use a mask? What would the legal consequences be? Unless Mr. Ross has that information handy. But I just, I'd like to be able to have that information so when people inquire about it, I can clearly have an answer of what the consequences would be to the district.
Board Member Grujhaeva, we can ask Mr. Ross to be a part of the July 20th presentation, which will deal with all things COVID a week from tonight. We can have that ready for you.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Hi.
Ms. Luna Rose.
Ms. Counts, thank you. I just wanted, there was a couple of letters that talked about having cameras in the classroom, which I will go publicly in record that I'm vehemently against. As a parent, I don't feel like it's violating my child's privacy and other children's privacy. And that's something that I will not abide with. So, just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Okay. Not hearing any further comments or questions. We are going on to the consent agenda. Before I make the motion to approve, is there any board members that would like clarification on the consent agenda or items pulled? Okay. I move the consent agenda as presented, item 5.2 through 5.7. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Grujhaeva, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we are moving on to our public hearing. So bear with me as I attempt to lead this. Haven't done a public hearing before, but I'm going to try to get it correct. And please interrupt me, Ms. Gutierrez or Mr. Ross, if I need some redirection or some guidance. Okay, so we are going to, I guess it's just item 6.1? I don't need to, okay, do anything besides that. So it's, oh, no, I'm sorry. We need to recess. Right? Yes. Okay. So I move that we recess to the regular board meeting.
A second?
Okay.
Ms. Counts?
Yes.
Is it recessing from the regular meeting into the public hearing?
Yes, I think that that's correct, right? Okay, I had it written incorrectly. So recess- So recess from the public meeting to -- could you?
Regular meeting into the public hearing.
Okay, regular meeting into the public hearing. So that's amended. And then, Ms. Grijalva, did you second?
I did.
Oh, Ms. Luna Rose did? Okay, so do you accept that amendment of the language?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we are moving into the public hearing. Item 6.1, Presentation of Fiscal Year 21-22 to TUSD Expenditure Budget in Public Hearing Pursuant to ARS 15905D. Dr. Trujillo?
Yes, President Counts, I'd like to welcome our Executive Director for Finance, Renee Weatherless, to lead us through this item. We are proposing no changes to the budget, other than what was originally proposed on June 22nd, when the governing board voted for the proposed budget. There have been no additional changes. In accordance with statute, we have this -- the proposed budget has been posted and publicly available online since June 22nd, and we're now ready for Ms. Weatherless.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo, President Counts, members of the governing board, Council Ross and staff. We do have a presentation, and there is a few slides that are repetitive from the proposed budget. Go ahead and dive right in. We do have a couple pieces of new information, one being the classroom spending estimate for the FY22 budget, as well as the estimated tax rate for this next year. So we'll go ahead and -- next slide, please. So this slide is the same thing you saw as far as the proposed deadline of July 5th and our public hearing. We need to meet the July 15th deadline for our adopted budget. The new deadline is that is showing here is September 15th, which I think might be a typo. I think it's 18th per statute. So the reason for this is that the state budget wasn't approved until after the deadline for the Auditor General's Office to prepare the forms and for school districts to start getting their proposed budgets approved. So we are still technically working off of the tentative forms that were provided to us. Now that the budget's been approved, the Auditor General's Office will be notifying all school districts when those updated forms are available, and then we have until September 18th to bring forth a new revised budget. So one of the things that you need to understand here is when -- we cannot adopt a budget that is higher than our proposed. We can adopt one lower, but we can't adopt one higher. So if we look at some of the changes that were included in that budget bill, and if something were to increase our budget capacity, then per statute 15905, we would be able to bring forth a new revision, and it could potentially increase if any of those changes that were made in that budget bill were to increase our capacity. So next slide, please. Basically, that's kind of what I've talked to you about, but the second half of this slide is about the funding formula changes themselves. So one being the base support level. We have already included what that base support was in the proposed budget. What was not included were these Group B weights. And so there was some Group B weight changes that will be included in the next round of budget forms. So for this mild disability classification, there is an increase in weighting from 5.833 to 5.988, as well as the other disability category going from 0.003 to 0.093. There's also a new category that's going to be broken out of Group A weighting, which applies to all students, and so it will come out of there and be specifically for gifted. So without the new forms, this is not in anything that we're looking at right now. I have tried to look at a rough estimate. Again, it could add some money. It wouldn't be significant, but it could be higher than what we're looking at. So once we have those forms, we will bring them back to you before that September deadline. Next slide, please. So looking at what is proposed and what will be asking to be adopted tonight, it does include the base support level of $4,390.65. So this increased $84.92 over last year. Part of that is inflation, which is at 1.21%, and the other part of that increase is $32.82 for the teacher increases that were part of the 20% by 2020 initiative that were previously funded under Classroom Site Funds in fiscal year 21. So that revenue is not completely new. It's just been transferred out of one funding source and being added into MNO. District additional assistance or capital in the past, for the past several years, 10-plus, we've had reductions to the capital funding formula. And so in fiscal year 22, this is the first year where we are going to see that capital fully funded. Classroom site funds, this per pupil revenue allocation is set by this state. We get it from the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, and this is just an information that for fiscal year 22, that amount is $733 per pupil. Now, the Teacher Experience Index, or TEI as we refer to, is a weighted factor that gets included in our budget calculation for the average years of experience of our teachers compared to that of the state. So this year, we've seen an increase, which we had seen a slight decline over a couple of years now, and so now we're trending back up where our experience has exceeded that of the state. And in our budget is an assumption that enrollment is flat to fiscal '21. Next slide, please. So being that our funding is based on average daily membership, I have included this slide and the next slide, just to see what was in our May '21 revision and what is included in our fiscal '21 budget. So you can tell that our in-person average daily membership versus our AOI, which is Arizona Online Instruction, you will see that those numbers are pretty much flat. On the next slide, the other part of our enrollment is the weighting. So I just talked about some additional Group B weighting. So when we get that budget revision, the new forms will calculate what the impact of that will be, and so you might see a slight change in that -- on that next revision. So there is just a minimal change of 60 ADM in our in-person weighting. Next slide, please. So when we look at the overall budget, what are some of the objectives we've tried to address in this budget? The first is the wage and salary recommendations that were previously approved by the board. The ESER grant funds that we have, we have to continue to monitor that funding and make sure we're compliant in the use of that money. We are required to revise and publish reentry plans to meet the requirements of ESER III. So that's something that we'll be bringing forth, I think was mentioned in the superintendent report as well. And then to continue to meet the requirements of our desegregation court order as outlined to see supervision. Next slide, please. One of our policies does include a carryover, a minimum amount. It's a minimum of 1%, so that is included. And this is to ensure that a carryforward is achieved at the end of the fiscal year going into the following fiscal year. Our efforts to continue to shift dollars into the classroom. This is the report that gets published by the Auditor General's Office every year about February, and if you -- we'll get to that slide, but you'll see that we have continued to make efforts every year to increase that number. So that is something that we continue to strive for. And then our reentry plan -- excuse me, reentry plans to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, that's going to also be included in those plans that were a part of ESER. And then to continue to monitor the status of the pending desegregation property tax lawsuit. So we were ruled in favor of that suit, but the district has yet to receive that revenue. So we will keep that in our sights. Next slide, please. So on here, what we're looking at is our two levied funds for MNO and capital and the budget capacity. So the funding formula itself starts with average daily membership and weighted count. So that's the first line on this slide, where you're seeing $53,233 compared to $53,172. This includes all weighting for Groups A and B. And when you multiply that times the base support, you're going to get what that revenue number is. So year over year, you're seeing a $16 million increase. So one of the things you have to keep in mind is that this past year, in fiscal '21, we took a significant decrease in our MNO funding, partially due to the online instruction funding formula. And so that's what you're seeing there. If you go down and look at the highlighted section at the bottom, when you're looking at capital, you're seeing a positive $1.9 million year over year. That's the reduction of the funding formula that you're no longer seeing going into FY22. And then tuition, prior-year carryover, again in the capital. That means that when we came out of fiscal '20 going into '21, we carried over $4.5 million in carryforward. And because of our online instruction, there were some monies that were not spent this year, and so that increase is going from 4.5 to 10.7. So we are carrying forward a total of $6.2 million in the capital. So when you add up all of these numbers between MNO and capital, what is our total budget capacity? Well, for FY22, it's going to be $365 million. And in FY21, that was $342. So in total, you're seeing a $23 million increase. But if we go to the next slide. So now that is our budget capacity, but we are going to be looking at here, how does that pan out? Well, our total budget limit, the first line on this particular slide, is that $365 million that we just talked about. So you can see the budget limit broken out between MNO and capital. So for MNO, it's $333. Our estimated expenditures that are included in this budget are also $333 million. So there's really no carryforward built into MNO in this budget that's being presented. On the capital side, that budget limit is $32 million, and the estimated expenditures included in this budget are $27.4. That $27.4 already takes into account our 1% carryforward, which amounts to about $3.6 million. So when you include that mandated carryforward per policy, that does leave a remaining balance of $4.6 million. So when you're looking year over year, you can see that we have a significant increase. Well, all of those increases are basically outlined in all of the initiatives and the motions and the work that have been done up through the spring and up to this point. So I've listed them here for you, just briefly go through them, like the compensation study of $4.4 million, which also included some compression, ASRS, substitute rate increases. A step was improved for all employee groups back in April. We had some capital proposals for fine arts and scholastics and some pre-K outdoor equipment also in April. We had increases for health insurance benefits, as well as increases related to utilities. So when you add up all of those increases, that does amount to a year-over-year increase of the $20 million. Do you have any questions at this point?
Ms. Counts? Ms. Weatherless, so that $20 million that you speak of, after subtracting it from the budget, what are we left with?
So if you go back up to the top, so this budget proposal includes the $20 million of all of these initiatives that are outlined here. So back up to the top, that $20 million's been embedded into the $333 million of MNO budget expenditures and the $27.4 million of capital expenditures. So the only thing that hasn't been committed at this point is that $4.6.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. So other approved expenditures. In May, we brought forth the Classroom Site Fund expenditure package, and I had mentioned earlier that revenue was $733 per pupil, and that package was presented at the full amount of that revenue of $35.5 million. And then we have ESER II expenditures. The total amount of the grant for ESER II was $76.3. This expenditure package was brought forth in June for that full amount, and so that is included in this budget you are viewing as well. Next slide. And I won't go through this slide. You have seen this slide. It is the one that was presented with that $35.5 million package for classroom site funds. So you can see that money goes towards the teacher performance pay, as well as some increases to the supplemental base and some one-time payments. Next slide, please. And this next slide that you'll be looking at, this is the detail behind the ESER expenditures. So these are all the items that were included in that proposal and that amount to the $73.76.3 million that was approved. Next slide, please. So this is just informational for the public to see the attachments that are on this item that are the budget book. So within the budget book, we have the proposed budget limits, as well as additional reports that will take those limits and identify where the monies are being allocated. So you can see by funding source, you can see by level. That would be whether it's elementary, middle school, K-8s, high school, or for departments. You can break it down by actual expenditures. You can look at the entire district budget on two pages, based on how we're spending it, salaries, benefits, supplies, et cetera. And then we have some detail within that, by school, by department, how all of these budget numbers are allocated. So that is just available for the public to review. Next slide, please. So from those reports, I've just provided some very high-level information for you. This one is by funding source. So you can see the top line there, the first one's MNO. So this is the same $333 million we just looked at a couple of slides prior, and some comparisons to last year and some prior-year actuals, just for reference. Capital, that's the other $32 million. Those two combined are your levied funds, and then you have the normal categories that we would present to you on a monthly basis, instructional improvement, federal grants, state grants, other funds, and internal service. So all of the detail behind here, by every single fund that we have in the district, are included in that budget book. So for anybody wanting to look at that detail, it is offered there. The next slide, we're taking those same numbers -- the next slide is actually DSEC. So for here, we have $63.7 million of DSEC. Now, this number is flat. We do not see any increases in our budget capacity from year to year. We do have a separate USP budget process that we work through, submitting drafts, working with the special master and plaintiffs. And this is just a summary of our budget by the 10 major USP categories. So it's the total $63.7 million, and then how it compares to last year's budget and to prior-year actuals. Next slide. So this, again, is the entire district budget, the $665 million for all funding sources, and it's broken down by level. So here, we're seeing of all this money, we have $119 million allocated to elementary schools, going all the way down to departments. So in departments, you will see things like food service, and you will see transportation. You will see all the other departments that exist in the district, and all of that is provided in the budget book. Next slide, please. So what has been updated here is an estimate of our classroom spending. So based on all of those allocations and all the funding sources that are comprised in this year's budget, we apply all the criteria that are used to calculate the classroom budget, I mean, the classroom dollar report by the Auditor General. And this is something that it's a little bit tough, because our budget includes all of the monies available to us to spend. So when you have some cash funds, you're not spending every dollar. The classroom dollar report only reflects actual spending. So often, you will see that this number is estimated in our budget, a little lower than where our actuals end up. But for this purpose, we went ahead and provided the estimate, and right now, all of the allocations would amount to 52.4% in instruction. If you go to the next slide, this is just comparing it to all of our prior years. So you will see there, at the bottom, the FY22 adopted. It is less than where our FY21 actuals are trending, and that is because of what I just mentioned. The final number is based on actual spending. Where we have cash funds that we will carryforward dollars that aren't spent, then those numbers would make a difference in there. And so -- And so every month, when I do monthly expenditure updates, you will see how those expenditures trend, and it does tend to increase the instructional percentage throughout the year, just based on timing of expenditures. Next slide, please. So this slide is just for information, for people to understand what goes into the different categories. So, for example, in the left, instruction, function 1,000, those are providing direct instruction to students, so teachers, TAs, subs, coaches, supplies, and instructional aides. All of these items are just some examples of what would fall under that category, versus student support and instruction support. So in student support, you have your counselors, nurses, health assistants, instructional support is where your librarians, your PD, your teacher mentors, and such. So this is just so people can get an understanding of what falls in that report. Next slide, please. And then we are looking at the tax rate. So part of this budget process, if you look at the proposed budget forms at that time, there was still some question as to the tax rate itself. All of that was finalized with the finalization of the state budget. So when we apply the formula, and all of this is formula-driven in how the tax rate gets set, then our tax rate for fiscal '22 is going to end up being approximately $6.10. And that's broken down between primary and secondary. So part of the secondary tax rate is the DSEG. This changed back in 1819. So where you see on this historical graph, where the color starts turning purple, that's when the DSEG ended up getting included into the secondary rate. So if you compare our tax rate, we're actually going down from fiscal '21. We're going down from $6.12 to $6.10 for this FY '22 budget. And next slide. That concludes my presentation. I'll take any other questions you may have at this time.
Ms. Couts?
Yes, Ms. Gruhava.
Yeah. Ms. Weatherless, can you go back one slide? And so does this include, I know we haven't, we're not there yet, but the notice of the tax increase that we're going to be talking about in the upcoming item, did these numbers include that increase?
It does, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so really, we're voting on an increase in taxes, but the average taxpayer will see a reduction in their taxes to TUSD?
The tax, a reduction in the tax rate, since the tax rate is based on your property values, it would depend on what property values are doing.
Okay, all right. But our rate is not increasing, it's coming down. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? All right. Mr. Ross, is this the time that we take public comments?
Ms. Couts, yes, this is, if there are no further questions from the board, this is a time for the public to make comments on the budget.
Okay. Clerk Shaw?
Thank you, Ms. Couts. During the audience call, the board president or board clerk will recognize speakers and maintain order by setting appropriate limitations. When addressing the board, the speaker should begin by stating their name and topic. Speakers are encouraged to be brief. The maximum speaking time is two minutes. You will be unmuted by the webinar host and will be cued with the phrase, "Begin now, please." Individuals attending the meeting via Zoom and/or addressing the board through written comments should observe rules of propriety, good conduct, and refrain from impertinent or slanderous remarks. TUSD serves students from all ages, so speakers should be aware that children may be listening or watching the meeting. And the first comment is from Dolores De Vera.
Please speak now.
This is Dolores De Vera. Governing Board, I and many of my substitute teacher colleagues were very disappointed that on May 25th, you all agreed to a plan that will reduce the number of schools that offer substitute teachers better pay rates. Make no mistake, this is a pay cut to some of your most loyal employees, because it's going to become increasingly difficult and probably eventually impossible to earn the same rates that we have been able to earn the last two years. Pay cuts mean a decreased quality of life. Now, we are very grateful that you increased the pay at the majority of schools, finally, to allow us to earn more than substitute teachers earned 21 years ago in TUSD. We have been campaigning for you to reverse those devastating cuts from 2010, since 2010. But why do you have to cut my pay to raise up the pay of the lower paying, of those who get paid less? I was happy to hear about stipends, but as I've said before, those are not equitable, and they're not going to offset the pay cuts that you have agreed to give me. In a year that we're finally getting increased revenue, I don't understand why anybody has to get a pay cut. You can do better for us, I think you know that. You've all received more extensive comments from me via email, I hope you had time to read them. When you support us, you're ultimately supporting the teachers who... When you give us pay cuts, it's not only saying you don't support us, you're saying you don't really care about the stress that teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De Vera. Next is Lillian Fox.
Please speak now.
Okay. My name is Lillian Fox. I had some questions that I wanted to ask Mrs. Weatherless, and I'm probably not going to have time to ask them, because I need to correct what the superintendent had to say. He claimed the budget book is only MNO money, that it doesn't include anything else, and so all the numbers I was quoting were just totally wrong, or incomplete, I guess. I've never heard Ms. Weatherless nervous on a presentation, I don't think. She sounded nervous this time, probably because she had to contradict what he said. She showed in her chart that desegregation money is included in the budget book, she showed that federal funds and grants are included, that SRR is included, and I will tell you, because I read the budget books, there's a whole separate column for Title I. So all the Title I money, all the federal money, was included in what I was saying, that Dr. Treheal appears not to be familiar with his own budget book. I think what he's doing is, every time I do a call to the audience, he immediately responds and denies whatever I said. He's made claims like the deadline for putting stuff, uploading documents, is 72 hours before the board meeting, that's Saturday afternoon. I guarantee you, the ladies in the board office are not there Saturday afternoon to upload documents. The other thing I would say to the board, if you want to ensure that the library media centers actually get funded for books and media, you've got to include a dollar amount in the funding formulas. I would suggest you say $9 per student for library and media, for the library centers. That ensures that every single school gets an equitable amount, that no school is left out, and that the money can't be used by the departments, that it can only be used by the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Next up is Mary Terri Schilts.
She's in the middle of logging in right now.
Ms. Couts, while we have a moment, I just want to explain that my internet is spotty, and so my camera can't always be on, because otherwise you all freeze. I just wanted to explain why I'm coming in and out. Thanks.
Yes.
The speaker has been invited, but we're waiting for her to join the meeting.
Okay. Looks like we have possibly another speaker. So stand by.
Next up is Alexander Relic.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening, members of the board. I actually was supposed to speak regarding the public tax increase. I'm not sure if this is the right.
Right. Yeah, no, we're still in the budget.
Right.
Thank you. We'll take you off, and then you can come back when we get into truth and taxation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Treheal or Mr. Ross, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, first, I have a response.
Okay.
To one of the speakers with regard to a statement made by, regarding one of the line items in the budget book. If we could, I will do a screen share. I have the budget book up right now. And Ms. Weatherless, I'd like to direct your attention to the line item for instructional aids. It references $912,000 coming out of DSEG for the FY '22 proposed, and a total of 4.9 million, or 4.3 million coming out of MNO for a combined total of $5.4 million to be spent on instructional aids. Do instructional aids include books and curricular resources?
Instructional aids do not include textbooks, that would be listed separately.
Not textbooks, but...
But supplemental books, yes.
Supplemental books, yes. That's my question. Supplemental books, supplemental readers, classroom books that could supplement a text. So it is inclusive of that cost, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, if we go to the second page, where it specifically references other books, periodicals, and media, I'm showing $62,193 coming out of MNO for books, periodicals, and media. Do we have verification that the $5.4 million that we're spending on readers and supplementary books, are those, is there any way to run a report to show specifically how much of that goes into the libraries versus classrooms? Or is that not broken out in this report?
That is not broken out, on what would be specific to libraries.
So there's no way to say that we're just spending a total of $63,000, $62,000 on supplementary books and readers and library books going into libraries and media centers, without actually running that full report on the $5.4 million that we're spending on instructional aids that are inclusive of readers, supplementary books, and materials that would support the primary text? We would have to run that report?
That's correct.
Okay. That was the original point I wanted to make, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Treheal. So we might have Mary Terri Schilts on. We have a phone number on the Zoom link, is that you, Ms. Schilts? If you can speak up if you are on. Ms. Mary Terri Schilts? No, okay.
And if that is you, Ms. Schilts, oh, is that you?
Phone number on the... Yes, that's correct, thank you, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Go ahead and begin.
If you thought that you were on. I have a question regarding, prior to, thank you, I have a question regarding, prior to approval tonight, where is the actual TUSD budget document that would be submitted to the state? Yes. Yes, that's correct, thank you, I'm here. Okay. Go ahead and begin. Could you please tell me? I have a question regarding, prior to, thank you, I have a question regarding, prior to approval tonight, where is the actual TUSD budget document that would be submitted to the state?
If you can mute the live stream before you talk.
That's correct, thank you, I'm here. Okay. Go ahead and begin. Could you please tell me, I have a question regarding, prior to, thank you, I have a question regarding...
President Couts?
Yes.
Could you ask the speaker to turn off the live stream?
Ms. Schilts, could you please turn off the live stream on your computer or your phone?
Oh, yes.
Okay, because, yeah, we're just getting a lot of feedback, it's unclear.
Sorry about that.
So after you turn that off...
I was just trying to quickly connect.
That's okay. Yeah, if you can just turn that off and then...
I apologize.
Repeat, quickly repeat your comment, once that's off.
I'm getting it, I'm getting it, let's see. Okay, is that better?
That's much better. Okay, please.
Terrific, I apologize for that.
That's okay, please start again.
I should have known better. Can you please tell me, prior to approval tonight, what the board is actually looking at, where's the actual TUSD budget document that would be submitted to the state with all the working papers, et cetera? Generally, that's what's included in the attached agenda items, and I don't find it.
Mr. Ross, are we able to respond?
Typically, what happens is there are comments, you can either, the chair can ask for a response immediately, or hold them until all the comments are in, and then direct responses from the administration if the board wishes.
Do we, is that our final comment for the night?
According to Arizona revised statute, when there's a question from the public, as far as I understand the law, you are obligated to respond and answer the question, it's a very simple question.
It is a simple question. I'll have our lawyer respond.
In terms of the interpretation of the law, there's nothing that says the response needs to be immediate, the chair controls the meeting all the time.
And so I will ask...
I do see where that is not correct. It's part of the public hearing notification, and I will be happy to send board members that ARS statute.
Well, Ms. Schilts, considering your question is very simple, I would like administration to quickly and briefly respond.
I appreciate it greatly, Ms. Couts, thank you.
Yes, I'll ask Renee to kind of, to walk our speaker through the first two or three pages of the budget book, which provide a very, very extensive overview of each particular expenditure category that we are proposing for fiscal year '22, and then to drill it down and show other components of the budget book on how to look at expenditure categories by both the department, down to the school level, and then even down to the itemized expense level.
Well, before we get in...
I believe that was the question, right? Was, where's the budget?
That's not how I heard the question. Ms. Schilts, are you just asking where you can find budget books on our budget books on our website?
No, I'm asking why the public cannot see on the website, let alone, of course, all the public who are denied access to any of this information for any number of reasons, why they cannot participate, especially during this time, some of which are understandable problems, but there should be a way that anybody can call in and listen to these TUSD board meetings, which is not possible right now.
Okay, so could you...
So for anybody who's denied that kind of access.
Okay. Just to stay on track here, could you give us your question very simply, in a way that we can answer quickly? Because we...
I thought I put it as simply as I could, but I appreciate your listening to it again. What I would like to know is, what, when you're approving a board agenda item, there should be a very specific item that you're approving. In this case, it would be the budget with the working documents, the whole thing that will actually be submitted to the state.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for.
Ms. Weatherless, do you have a quick response for our speaker?
Yes, I do, thank you, Ms. Couts. So we're actually currently in item 6.1, which is the public hearing and the presentation. The actual approval or motion to adopt the budget is in the next item of 8.1. So if you look on that board agenda item, there are the adopted budget forms. I believe those are the forms that the speaker is inquiring about.
That may be, thank you a million, that's what I needed to know, I just want to see the actual document that you're approving.
All right, thank you for your call.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherless.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Ross, we are reconvening to the regular meeting? Is that correct?
If there are no further speakers on the, on the budget, then... If there are no further speakers on the, on the budget, then that would be the next step, yes.
Okay, so at this point, I will reconvene to the regular meeting. And that moves us to action item 8.1, adoption of the fiscal year '21-'22 TUSD district annual expenditure budget. I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Grijhavas' seconds? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Schultz.
Sorry, I thought we were to get time to discuss after the motion.
Direction, Mr. Ross?
I did see Ms. Shaw's hand go up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Okay, so.
My hand wasn't up, but I just thought we would have space.
Okay. All right, I've made the motion and it's on the floor, so we're not, we can't pull back at that point.
So it's on the floor for discussion.
Okay, yes, that's true. Okay, so Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Ms. Counts, and thank you for everybody who wrote in or called in to the forum. I do think that, you know, there is still a lot to be desired from this budget. I definitely unite with Ms. Devetta, who, and most subs who, you know, want that, those 25 schools that are hard to fill reinstated. I think the number now is, what, 15, Dr. Treheo? And I, you know, the whole, just the way that we got to that number is a little bit questionable. And so for this next upcoming school year, because everything's so up in the air, I really think that we should stick to our original number of 25 hard-to-fill schools for subs. Also, Ms. Fox made a great point about funding our libraries. That, what you showed, Dr. Treheo, about the library books and the media stuff, like on that line item that said library books, there wasn't really anything there. And so I see what Ms. Fox is saying, that like truly we're not funding our libraries. And of course, we can't fully fund our libraries if we don't have, you know, certified librarians at elementary, middle and K-8, and also we have no director of the library. So I think we have things that we can add, not only what I mentioned, but I'm, I think we can do, do better. So I'm not happy with this budget. I think we should postpone a vote. I know there are still some bargaining groups that want to weigh in on some of these things, so I would like to give them a chance as well. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Treheo?
So just a couple of notes. Again, my hearing is not what it used to be. So I did hear Ms. Fox erroneously, on my end, I heard her reference $62,193. So my original statement is that $62,193 is purely MNO and reflective of MNO, but her statement was $162,115. So between $162,000 and $62,000, my original statement was pertinent to the $62,193 noted as being strictly MNO. Now that being said, my original point returns to the $4.9 million that we are spending in supplemental readers under instructional aids. I think that we need to run a detailed report to show exactly where those readers are going and how much are going and how much of those materials are ending up in libraries around the district before we draw conclusions that we are simply not spending money on readers, books, to equip, to equip both classroom libraries and libraries at large. I would rather see Ms. Weatherless give her an opportunity to run a report. Almost $5 million we're spending in instructional aids, that's a significant amount of money, and I'd like the public record to reflect exactly where those books and where those readers are going. Textbooks, of course, as Ms. Weatherless suggested or stated are separate, that's a separate line item. We're referencing those classroom readers that are used as supplementary readers to build up those in-classroom libraries and of course, our libraries as well. My second point is that I'm in full support of librarians returning to the district, I always have been. It's just a question of feasibility and financial practicality. Throughout this budget building season, we've heard our governing board voice very, very passionately a desire to move the district to $15 an hour as a standard minimum wage benchmark that every single employee will enjoy in years to come. What we learned through the compensation study is that's going to be a almost $8.5 million price tag. It's $6.2 million simply to execute the newly established rate and then you have benefits on top of that, which is going to take us to $8.5 million recurring. That's not a one-time expense, that's not a singular purchase-one-book, purchase-one-bus. That's going to be a commitment year over year. We've also heard the governing board, in addition, again, talk very passionately about compression and to be able to address compression. Now, on top of that $8 million, we're going to have to invest at least another four, five, potentially six million in compression costs to be able to deal with the compression-related expenses that will come with supporting our veteran employees that make $15 an hour and are going to have to be moved up. So you add that, that's a recurring expense. Now we're into $11 or $12 million in recurring expenses. Then we've also heard, of course, the governing board speak very, very passionately about restoring librarians in every school. That's an additional $6 million of recurring salary expenses every single year. That is a total of $18 million in recurring expenses. Now, we have advocates out in the community that do not like administrative spending and have always said, "Take the cuts out of administration." Just to show you the, the, just very, very intimidating figure that $18 million is to fund all of these initiatives, even if you wanted to go administrator-less in the district. Not that anybody wants to do that, but let's just say that we took 100% of the cuts out of administration and we went principal-less, assistant principal-less, no superintendent, no director anywhere. That's $11.5 million. We would still have to come up with another $7 million to execute all of these long-range plans. So my point is that nobody here, including in my administration or anybody that I've heard on the board, thinks that restoring librarians is a bad idea. We're all very passionate about it, but we need to find a financially sustainable way to do it. We need to include the recently established governing board budget advisory committee, get them involved. Look at a phased-in approach. We need to be able to leverage some of our other federal funding sources so that the burden doesn't just fall on, on MNO. We also look at what we spend on employee benefits. If you look at, in our budget book, in terms of what we're spending on employee benefits, that's $53.2 million. That's inclusive of everything that makes TUSD attractive for people to come and work for us, right? And so we don't want to have to go into that area as well to fund some of these initiatives. So it's a lot easier to advocate for it and I respect that and I hear everybody in the community. It's trickier from this position to find the room to fund it in the budget.
And Dr. Treheo, I would add, there was a lot of other expenses. The art teachers that we've included, the counselors, and those are ongoing as well and millions of dollars there. So I am happy to vote for this budget. I think in my time, not only on the board, but watching this board and other school boards, we have been able to do more this fiscal year and then, and continue that work and continue doing all the good work that we've done in hires and really putting our money where our mouth is and our priorities and our values and, to the benefit of our kids. So I think that this is a great budget, I'm happy to support it. Of course, we can always do, we can always do better and we can always improve, but we've made huge, huge strides, like I've heard from many longtime TUSD veterans that they've never seen this level of support and spending in the classroom and with support services for our students. So I applaud the work that Dr. Treheo has done and Ms. Weatherless and I am, I think, do we need to revote, Mr. Ross?
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms., was that?
Yes, it's me.
Okay. Yeah, let me just ask the question really quick and then I'll keep it open for, but will we need to go through that again?
Well, since there was discussion, my recommendation would be to revote.
Okay, so let's continue with discussion, Ms. Luna Rose.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick question for Ms. Weatherless or maybe Dr. Treheo. So I do know some of our bargaining units are still in talks right now. So is there harm in postponing a vote to, to make sure that everybody's being heard at the table?
So I'll say, you know, what I said on June 22nd. We're voting on budget capacity. The governing board can shift and reallocate money anywhere it wants to at any point during the year. And what we need to do right now is we have a deadline for the state, we have to submit a budget capacity. I do know that what's, without getting too much into it, there's $4.6 million that there's just a difference of opinion. The administration's recommendation is that we need to wait to see where our enrollment comes in. It's way too early to be zeroing out and not having any kind of carry forward. The administration does not recommend spending capital dollars on salaries. We need to be spending those dollars on books and buildings and facilities where they should be spent. That's, some of our association leaders, of course, that's their job, is to advocate and they feel very differently about it. I think we can continue those conversations. I don't think that that should hold up a budget approval because that $4.6 million is there. It's going to be there. We're not recommending that we do anything with it. It gives the board an opportunity to see where the enrollment comes during the 40th day. If the enrollment is strong, we can continue those discussions about some of other, some of those salary requests. Obviously, with more enrollment, we're going to have more MNO dollars and we wouldn't have to go capital with regard to looking at some of those salary requests. So that's, that's our recommendation, Ms. Luna Rose. There's no, there's no rule that says that your vote for this budget capacity tonight prohibits the governing board from allocating dollars to other expenditure categories at some point later on in the year. You can do that anytime and then Ms. Weatherless simply returns with revisions, dependent on our enrollment. The revision will either be adding money to the budget or subtracting, depending on how enrollment comes in. Ms. Weatherless, did you want to add anything else?
That is correct. I just want to make sure that, that when you look at the slides, that total budget capacity of $365 million, what you're discussing is allocations within that and kind of what Dr. Treheo was talking about. But what we're asking for approval tonight is the budget limits that were set forth in that presentation. Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Grijhavas.
So just to summarize, we're, we're voting on the ceiling. We're voting on how much the district can spend. And then, Dr. Treheo, you're saying that there is a carryforward amount there, that if a majority of the board at some time in a future meeting wants to reallocate, that we can do that by a board vote, but what we're voting on is this is our capacity. We can, we can do different things within the line items, for some of the line items, but ultimately, we're voting on the total that we're going to spend for the district.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And, Dr. Treheo, the deadline required by the state is when?
Ms. Weatherless, can you kind of walk us through the particulars on, on the state side of it, the requirements?
Yes, so the deadline for the adopted budget is July 15th, which would be this Thursday. If we do not have an adopted budget by that time, then we would be restricted on any spending we could do in this fiscal year.
Period, yeah.
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Mr. Rob, or sorry, Dr. Robbie.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. I think kind of to echo a lot of what Dr. Treheo is saying, you know, perfection and I mean a good and I don't think we're ever going to get a perfect budget and there's always going to be work to do. And I'm really proud of what this team has put together, you know, and what our leadership team has put together over these past six months that this governing board has been meeting. And slide 11 in the presentation that Ms. Weatherless gave summarizes a lot of what Dr. Treheo mentioned about some of the really important investments we've made in our district. In a short time that I've been on the governing board, you know, we've made significant investments on employee benefits and raising the minimum wage and doing, you know, so many important things with art and music and interscholastics. I think the budget advisory committee is going to look at four important issues this fall to get her, to get us to a better state of perfection, which of course, we'll never achieve, but we'll keep on improving, addressing, continuing phasing in increases to the minimum wage and how to, how to make permanent some of our investments from ESAR and how to best use the desegregation money and address classroom sizes are the four priority areas that we selected last, last meeting. I think, you know, I hope this committee is successful and I hope June of next year, we'll pick in four new topics to discuss and whether, you know, it's addressing literacy through, through libraries and books and certified librarians and other issues in the future. I think there's a lot of great things that we can do to continue moving towards a, a better, a better budget in years to come as we address issues and understand issues and really look at implications of the cost-benefit analysis because, you know, we have, we have a fixed amount of money. We, we have a budget we need to work within. And, you know, we'll continue to do the best we can to make sure we reallocate this budget to, you know, meet the needs of our, of our teachers and staff and as a result, meet the needs of our students so that they grow and learn as best as possible. And so this can be a work in progress in our, my four years on this board and our two years working together these next two years.
All right, any further comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Treheo, we got many emails about the compression issue for those employees who, like specifically bus drivers, who the new, new bus drivers come in at 16, but for our veteran drivers who are close to that number and it took, you know, more than a decade to get there, they have questions about, you know, how are we taking care of them? And if you can address that, like is the, I think I saw the number as 200,000 to address compression for that. Can you address that and really speak to how our veteran employees who, if they're in that group, that sum got raises, how are we taking care of them?
So, so I want to start, I'm going to start with really, and more for the public because I know the board, you've had this information and I don't, I don't want to be repetitive, but I want to be very, very clear with the public when we're talking about compression. And then I'm going to ask Renee Hoizer, who's on the call, to kind of talk about the communication that's already gone out to the employees and the timeline for their new salary, their new salary adjustments and when they can expect to see them and the messaging. So I want to make sure that everybody is very, very clear in the understanding of compression. Compression is when you have a veteran employee that makes exactly what the newly established rate is or less than. And there's new employees that are coming in after the veteran employee making more. So case in point, if you have John Q. Bus Driver that makes $14 an hour after seven or eight years of service and the newly established rate is 16, that is a bus driver that now needs a compression adjustment, okay? Because you can't have a new employee, we don't want a new employee coming in, in the first year and eclipsing the veteran by $2. Now, when we say veteran bus drivers, we have two categories, okay? We have veteran bus drivers that qualify for compression, that they are those bus drivers that $14 an hour, $15 an hour, I've been here for many years and now the board has voted for $16 an hour. Is somebody going to hook me up? Is somebody going to deal with my compression? Because I've been serving the district for many years and now new employees are going to come in behind me and make more than me. You have a second category of veteran bus driver that makes well and above $16 an hour, okay? Those that might be making 18 or 19 or have several years of service. If we're going to adjust their hourly rate of pay, that's not compression, that's a raise. Because they're not affected by compression because they're well above the newly established rate. And there's been a little bit of confusion out there about that and I just wanted to take this opportunity to be very, very clear. It's not that the governing board shouldn't consider that. You know, I know that a lot of our bus drivers that are above the $6. consider that. You know, I know that a lot of our bus drivers that are above the $16 an hour rate, they have some feelings about other bus drivers getting an additional adjustment to their salary, and they're not getting anything. So it is a valid concern, and we certainly have heard from those bus drivers. But that request is not a request for a compression adjustment. That's a raise. That's, that's a request to get equalized with any payments that are being issued to any other bus drivers as a result of the $16 an hour. So with that, I'd like to invite Renee Hoiser, if you would, just kind of update the board and the community on where we are at with our bus drivers that are affected by compression. What's the timeline? When can they see the difference in their paychecks?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Trujillo, President Counts, members of the board. We've been working on the compression project pretty heavily these past three weeks, looking at every single individual. You know, we're not just working, obviously, with the bus drivers. We're seeing, well, compression is just with the bus drivers, but we're seeing salary schedule changes for everybody. Specifically for the bus drivers, anybody who has several years of experience, we're looking at their seniority date, how long have they been in that position, and then they are getting credit for every year that they've worked. So it'll be $16 an hour plus 1% per year for every year that they've been here. We have sent out two or three communications now to all employees to let them know that the work is, is in progress. We're looking at every employee individually, where their placement is now, where their placement will be. We're going to be meeting with our department heads in the next couple of weeks to go over each, each of their department's staff to let everybody know what's going on. And then at that point, we'll send out letters to all of our employees to let them know. And it'll have all the information in there about how to get in touch with us if they have any questions or concerns. So employees are being targeted to see, see that information at the first part of August. We're hoping that any checks that we, you know, because the work, again, we have audited, we have checked, we have rechecked, and we are actually triple checking, because we want to get this right. And so it is taking a little bit longer to push it out, but we want to make sure that when we do push it out, that those numbers are right and that they make sense. We're telling employees that they should look for information from Human Resources that is tailored to them specifically in the first couple of weeks of August. Then we'll be working with payroll to see as quickly as we can which pay period we can get those changes uploaded on, and it will all be retroed back to whatever their first day of work was. So nobody will lose any money. With regard to the step increases, those have already been done. So if employees start working, they'll already see those step increases. It's just the compression piece for bus drivers that they'll see possibly on a later check. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just to clarify, so the compression is for those employees who have worked less than, what, 15 years?
Compression will, will hit anybody, but yes, any, anybody who's been here for a really long time, that is placed appropriately because they've been here a while. So say, for example, you've been here for 18 years, and maybe your hourly rate is $22 an hour. If, if that, if you are not compressed, because you're already making what you should be making based on that entry rate and based on, on where you are, you might not see that. When we're going through those numbers, it looks like every bus driver will see a change, but those at the top are certainly not going to see the, the $2 an hour or so change that the ones at the bottom are going to see. As, as you've been here longer, that compression rate lowers. And so those who have been here for 18, 20 years are probably going to see less than a dollar an hour.
But they will be seeing a raise according to the percentage of, or 1% per year they've been here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Michelle, I'm sorry, Ms. Gutierrez, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Grijalva?
Yes.
Dr. Gribosha?
Yes.
Ms. Luna Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Counts?
Yes. Okay, item passes. Now we are moving on to, where, sorry, I'm going to move that we recess. I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, do I need to make a motion that we recess?
That would be one of those things I think you could do by unanimous consent, just to recess the regular meeting and move to the public hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to recess the regular meeting and move to the public hearing. And, sorry, we are on 9.1, Truth in Taxation. Notice of Tax Increase and Approval of the Truth in Taxation Notice of Tax Increase. Ms. Shaw, do we have, I'm sorry, is it the call to the, the comments first or the presentation first?
If there's a presentation, that goes first.
Okay. So, Dr. Trujillo, item 9.1.
Yes. Per Arizona revised statutes, a district can levy funding for adjacent ways projects, which are really designed to address traffic control and safety in our schools that are adjacent to city and county roadways. Of course, such projects have to go before the School Facilities Board for review of their, their feasibility and whether or not they're compliant with the parameters for adjacent ways projects. So here, to take us through the Truth in Taxation presentation is Renee Weatherless. And then, of course, we'll follow with the public hearing. Ms. Weatherless?
Thank you.
Thank you. So President Counts, members of the governing board, Dr. Trujillo, Council Ross and staff, we can go ahead and advance to the next slide. So just as Dr. Trujillo alluded to, these funds that were included in the budget that you just approved, we are asking to add, addition to the tax rate, to levy for $1 million for adjacent ways. So these funds can be used for any maintenance construction on public roads adjacent to property owned by the district. So this slide just kind of outlines some of the different types of projects that you could see. If you go to the next slide, whenever the district is engaged in these type of projects, we do have to work through the School Facility Board. They do review those plans before they get, before they begin. And then I also included, just more for information, we're not going to go through this whole presentation, but we did include the actual statute. So that way, for the benefit of the public, they can see that the district is allowed to levy for these funds. So in this case, that $1 million is applied to the tax rate, which actually, it equates to 2.66 cents that was included in that $6 tax rate that we talked about in the budget item. And so that is what we're here tonight to request approval for.
Okay. Clerk Shaw?
During the audience call, the board president or board clerk will recognize speakers and maintain order by setting appropriate limitations. When addressing the board, the speaker should begin by stating their name and topic. Speakers are encouraged to be brief. The maximum speaking time is two minutes. You will be unmuted by the webinar host and will be queued with the phrase "begin now, please." Individuals attending the meeting via Zoom and/or addressing the board through written comments should observe rules of propriety, good conduct, and refrain from impertinent or slanderous remarks. TUSD serves students from all ages, so speakers should be aware that children may be listening or watching the meeting. And the first comment is from Alexander Relich.
Begin now, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Alexander Relich, and I just wanted to speak out against this increase in taxation. The school board has already increased taxes so many times over the past several years. TUSD is constantly taking in money and yet continues to have failing school after failing school. And it seems no matter how much money is raised for any project or any purpose, TUSD always comes back to us, the taxpayers, and says, oh, we just need more. Over the past three years, all of the teachers in the district have received a 20% raise, more than any private sector raise that anyone has received over these past three years. And so I just want to kind of speak for the taxpayers and say enough is enough. Frankly, I think with a 650-some million dollar proposed budget, as was discussed earlier, if you need another million dollars, perhaps you should look towards reducing the administrative overhead that is crippling the district and has not produced good outcomes from students. And I would urge you all to reject taxing us all even more, and instead look to cut your own spending and reduce the costs that we taxpayers have to bear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Relich. Next is Lillian Fox.
Begin now, please.
My name is Lillian Fox. I, I just, I kind of understand what this tax increase can be used for, but I wondered if you could give a specific example of what's going to be done with it. A million dollars doesn't seem like a lot. And just give me an example, one example of what the money would be used for. And I assume if the School Facilities Board has approved it, it's reasonable. There was a question in there.
Dr. Trujillo, do you have an answer?
Yes, procedurally, are we, respond? Is this the moment we can respond?
Yeah.
Okay, Renee, I know you met with operations yesterday and have sort of an idea, or if we have Damon on the line, we could talk about some of the projects that we have in the works for some of the adjacent ways funds. This will be the time to
I just need one.
Speak to those projects.
I can, I can speak to, one at Pister is a large drainage project. So, I mean, typically you're looking at things like a bus lane, or our parking lots, or just the ingress, egress onto our properties.
Okay, thank you. All right. For the purposes of discussion, I will go ahead and move.
Ms. Counts, we have more.
Oh, we do. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Shaw?
Next is Steve Mills.
Ms. Counts, Mr. Mills sent in his written comments. We did send him an invite, but he has not responded, he has not logged on yet, so I will go ahead and read his comments into the record.
Okay, thank you.
No more, no more taxes. I've lived on, I live on a fixed income, and eventually will be taxed out of my paid-for home if all the entities that can raise taxes without a vote continue on the same path they have been for years. No more, no more taxes. Stephen Mills.
Thank you, Ms. Penya. And then the last letter, or the last speaker is Mary Terri Schlitz.
Begin now, please.
Hi. I would like to express gratitude to board members for your significant questions, knowledge, and study of the fiscal year 2022 budget for TUSD. I have a question. Why is the Truth in Taxation hearing not prior to the public hearing regarding the proposed budget? Especially in these times during a serious pandemic and all the millions and millions of dollars received through the Federal Cares Act, ESER, including the tremendous problems for taxpayers at this point in time, and as taxpayers yourselves, how could you consider such additional burdens? Additionally, due to numerous school closures and decreases in student enrollment for many years, now is not a reasonable time to raise our property taxes. There is a raise proposed, or there would be no need for a Truth in Taxation hearing. To quote, "The Tucson Unified School District is proposing an increase in its primary property tax levy of $1 million." And we just heard that from Renee Weatherless and her position. Prior, that's, that's, those are my questions and my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
No, but I believe there was a question in there about maybe the placement of, yeah.
The order of the agenda?
So I will turn to Rob. In terms of the legal requirements around truth and taxation, and anytime that we are levying anything from the primary rate, this is one of those categories of expenditures that we can do outside of an, of an election. However, we are required to facilitate these public hearings. To the extent that it can be, that it can precede the public hearing on the budget, I'll defer to our general counsel.
I don't think there, I'm not sure whether there's a, a reason to do it one way or the other. I've seen it done both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Was that our?
Ms.
Yes, Ms. Grijalva.
Are there any more speakers?
No.
Otherwise, I have a question. So just, just to clarify, I was looking at the screen, when you, when you mentioned the screen in the previous hearing regarding the budget, the rate is less. But we are having a hearing about a notice of a tax increase. So can you clarify that for the public? Because last year, our rate was 6.1243, and now it's 6.0888. So the actual, the total rate, the total tax rate is going to be less. But is it because this is specific to the adjacent ways? Or why do we have to have a hearing if the total tax, the total tax rate is going to actually be less this year?
Yeah, I'll ask Ms. Weatherless and Mr. Ross to address, but, but just for the public, you know, specifically, we are going to be asking for a tax of $2.67 for every $100,000 of assessed home value for property owners inside of the Tucson Unified School District. The average home value inside of our boundaries is $230,000. That would equate to just over $6. And I know that, you know, I just want to make sure that we're clear about the amount in terms of what we're asking, before I turn it over to Mr. Ross and Ms. Weatherless.
Dr. Trujillo, you're correct. The statute has a calculation for this particular notice. It actually has the language that we are supposed to use, and specifically regarding a levy for adjacent ways. So, so it's, it's really, and Ms. Grijalva kind of nails this, that it, there's an overall tax rate decrease, but the statute still requires, because of the calculation that it, that it does, to provide this tax increase notice. I don't know if Renee wants to weigh in any further than that, but it's, it's really a statutory formula, and there is a discretion on whether we do the notice and call it what the statute calls a tax increase, even though the overall rate is decreasing.
You're correct, Rob. And, and it is because the board does have the ability to approve or not. So if the board did not, does not elect to have this, then the tax rate would be lower by that, that dollar amount, that 2 cents, 2.66 cents. So I think that's why they reference it as a tax increase, because we have to have this opportunity to allow the public to weigh in. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I will move the item for sake of discussion, for other discussion.
I'll second.
Ms. Grijalva seconds. Any other comments or questions?
Yes. Can I get clarification on the, the total tax rate? What is decreasing? So I understand the total tax rate is decreasing. We're voting on a slight increase on a special levy for improvements around our schools, but other parts of the tax rate are decreasing. So what is decreasing in our, in our tax rate?
Ms. Weatherless?
The, the tax rate is set based on the amount of money we need to meet our budget limit. So when you look at the valuation of the property inside of our district, we only need so much money to reach that point. So it does, our tax rate will fluctuate based on the property values. So when you plug in the QTR, which is the qualified tax rate set by the state, it, it works through the Joint Legislative Committee, and it includes DSEG, it includes our bond repayments, as well as this truth, this adjacent ways, the Truth in Taxation amount of $1 million, and our dropout prevention. So those are all the elements and transportation that go into the tax rate. So I believe it is the, the actual QTR went down from year to year, from '21 to '22, because it is an inverse relationship with property values.
All right. So to get to the $333 million MNO that we approved in the last vote, we need a certain tax threshold based on property values in the need a certain tax threshold based on property values in the TUSD property tax region. And so that's where the tax rate comes from. And what we're voting on right now is that extra levy for the improvements around our schools.
That is correct.
Which isn't in the budget at all. So that, that extra levy, that piece wasn't in the budget we approved in the last vote. This is a
So inside of the budget that you approved, again, those are budget limits and capacities. So inside of that budget, you will see the million dollars of adjacent ways. In this particular motion, we are approving the additional 2.66 cents of the tax rate itself, not the, not the budget limit. I was just speaking to your question about how the whole tax rate is decreasing from one year to the next.
So this, the amount is already, and the levy and the, and the things we want to spend on is already included in the budget we already approved?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Michelle, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes. Ms. Grijalva?
Yes.
Dr. Gavolsha?
Yes.
Ms. Luna Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Counts?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to be reconvening into our regular meeting. Action item 11.1. Oh, wait, that's what we just did. Okay, we are going to recess to regular meeting into public hea, okay. That's not correct on this agenda. We're going to reconvene the regular meeting. And that moves us to
Ms. Counts?
Yes, please.
I think effectively you did reconvene the meeting when you made the motion to approve the, the notice. So now you're, you have moved on to, to the item after the truth in taxation notice adoption.
Okay. Thank you. I would be lost without you. This is very confusing. Item 12.1, Presentation on the Career and Technical Education Instructional Time Model and Public Hearing pursuant to ARS 15901.08B.
Ms. Counts?
Yes.
Before the presentation, I wonder if we could just tell the public where they can submit comments in real time. We don't have any calls to the audience for the next two items. So Michelle, if you could just tell the public that email to be able to speak a comment live after our presentation of 12.1 and 14.1.
Board member, Board President Counts, four members of the board, Dr. Trujillo and General Counsel. The website or the email address to address, to speak in real time for the public hearing of career tech, technical education instruction time model is public hearing CTE@tusd1.org altogether. Once again, the email address is publichearingcte@tusd1.org. The other item, which is the TUSD Virtual Academy Instructional Model and Public Hearing, the email address is publichearingvirtualacad@tusd1.org. Once again, the email address is publichearingvi, virtual, this isn't spelled right, virtualacad@tusd1.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And for anyone listening, if you need that repeated, it's on Board Docs under the item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Trujillo, item 12.1, the public hearing.
Yeah, and pursuant to recently passed legislation, anytime the district or a school, an Arizona school district or school wants to implement an alternative instructional model that deviates from the traditional five-day in-person model, we're required to facilitate no fewer than two public hearings before the board can vote. Tonight is the first of two public hearings. That will be on the newly proposed CTE, proposed educational delivery models. So returning to what Board Clerk Shaw said, members of the viewing public, if for whatever reason you're not able to view tonight or participate tonight, hang on, because public hearing number two is scheduled for next week. So you'll have an opportunity, a second opportunity to weigh in during the second public hearing. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Coordinator for CTE Programming, Mr. Chuck McCollum, to lead us through a brief but very informative overview of the proposed educational delivery models.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. Good evening, President Counts, members of the governing board, Dr. Trujillo and Mr. Ross. Tonight, we're going to give our first of two presentations for the public hearing required by House Bill 2862 on proposed instructional time models for career and technical education. These are outside of the normal school day. It will not affect what goes on with a master, a site's master schedule, and will be used in an extended day fashion, which is after school. If we go to slide, the next slide, please. There are three options that we have on this presentation tonight. The first one is a five-day calendar, Monday through Thursdays, but what also includes possible Saturdays. The class would meet three of those days. Instructional minutes per day will vary, and we'll go through an example later, which will show that. Times will, there are times that the class could occur on Saturdays. We feel that this will meet the needs of students in a more opportune fashion for them to take advantage of our program. Instructional time will meet or exceed the requirements by the state. And the district, we will work with synergy to align our attendance policies to conform with the education delivery model. Our second proposal is a five-day hybrid project-based and independent learning calendar, which will take place Monday through Friday. Again, it should meet three days a week, and the class would vary in instructional time. But during this time, direct instruction could take a, a few different angles. It could be done in a synchronous fashion, as per the instructor. There could be asynchronous learning that goes on, or half of the learning could be in a project-based situation, which could be an internship that the student is taking with one of our industry partners. Okay? And the last one, which is titled incorrectly, I apologize for that, is also a hybrid project-based model that would go Monday through Thursday. Any one of those days, it will meet three days a week. Instructional time will vary. Classes will meet half in person and at least half virtual. Okay? Those are our three models. What we believe is that in response to the remote learning that took place in school year 2021, we know that education has evolved. The options being presented tonight provide opportunities to meet the needs of students in a non-traditional and creative approach. Can we go to the next slide, please? As an example, our extended day program, one example of our extended day program, excuse me, would meet the, the, at the regular school. Instructional time would, that would, in a synchronous fashion, direct instruction. One day a week, the student would report to the site where the room is taking place and have 180 minutes, three hours, of hands-on instructional time. The format would meet both our ADE instruct and career technical education required lab time. By providing these additional options, it would allow students to more, to have more access to entry-level points into our CTE program. It would also maximize facility use beyond the normal school day. If we could go to the next slide, please. Here's an example of what we're talking about. Let's take, for example, our dental assisting program at Santa Rita High School. It is quite difficult for students from all over the district to get to that program. By offering an extended day program, which is two days of remote learning for direct instruction, and one day of having to be on campus at Santa Rita High School to have three hours of hands-on instruction, provides more access for our students to take these programs. It is not feasible for us to open up another dental assisting program from a cost or from a instructional standpoint, just say southwest side, to make that access easy for our students. We feel that this type of option will allow students from southwest side to be able to take these classes, this program, I'm sorry, with limited need for transportation. So those are our three options that we're, we're asking the board to approve. We're going to come back at another board meeting and have another public hearing. But we think this is outside-the-box thinking that, that we need to look at to increase opportunity for our students. If there are any questions at this point, I would be happy to take them.
Board members, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Luna Rose?
Thank you, Mr. McCollum, for your presentation. Much appreciated. I don't know if this is a question for you or for Dr. Trujillo. So we're having this, let me just get this correct. We're having this public hearing on CTE instructional time model. Is it, this is something that the state is mandating us to do?
That is correct, board member. Yeah, we are, we are proposing an instructional model that's alternative in nature.
We are proposing a model that's alternative in nature.
From the five days of in-person instruction. So we're required to facilitate these public hearings. There must be two at least before the governing board can vote.
But are we, is the district changing, making these changes to the CTE program and thinking out of the box, as Mr. McCollum said, because of a mandate, or is this something that we, the district is trying new?
This isn't because of the mandate. This is greater flexibility and access for CTE students and their specialized programs that may still want to remain remote, but still gives them an opportunity to meet ADE requirements for CTE programming. And Mr. McCollum can give a few more details, but this was not a result of 2862 happening and then we reacted. This is the other way around. This was innovatively designed by Mr. McCollum and his team, and then we had this requirement dropped on us, and so here we are. So, Mr. McCollum?
Yeah, I, I think this is, if we want to shout to more half-thinking, as said, outside the box, this is one way for us to make programs more accessible to our students. Dr. Trujillo, we have run extended day programs and passed the implementation of Santill 2822. We do have to now bring it to some public forums to get permission before we're, pay it out there before the board can vote on.
Okay. And then my follow-up question, really quickly, is how does doing this type of different split sort of thing, or outside-the-box, does that affect the teachers' hours, or how is that going to work?
Mr. McCollum, can you speak to the
Okay, I didn't quite hear that. Who's hours?
Yeah, how does this, how does this directly impact the teacher's working schedule inside of CTE, these new models?
Oh, that, that's a great question. In some cases, it could actually be one-fifth of their contract. If, if we run it in, in a normal schedule, say, a teacher works periods two through six, and then has the extended day program after school. In other cases, it could be a six-fifths for the teacher, where they teach their normal five classes during the day, but we have enough interest to offer a, a program in the extended day format, and the teacher would then earn a six-fifths contract as opposed to a five-fifths.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I just wanted to remind the public that this is just information only, and we will have a second presentation and then the vote for this item and the next item coming up. So again, this is just information. Ms. Shaw, do we have any comments?
We do.
Okay.
During the audience call, the Board President or Board Clerk will recognize speakers and maintain order by setting appropriate limitations. When addressing the board, the speaker should begin by stating their name and topic. Speakers are encouraged to be brief. The maximum speaking time is two minutes. You will be unmuted by the webinar host and will be cued with the phrase, "Begin now, please." Individuals attending the meeting via Zoom and/or addressing the board through written comments should observe rules of propriety, good conduct, and refrain from impertinent or slanderous remarks. TUSD serves students from all ages, so speakers should be aware that children may be listening or watching the meeting. And our only comment is from Lillian Fox.
Begin now, please.
Okay. This sounds a lot like what TUSD, or what Dr. Trujillo proposed a couple of years ago. I have a, a couple of questions. Is busing going to be provided for students who are coming from other schools, other locations? And then the second question is, Dr. Trujillo originally, a couple of years ago, was saying that, because this is going to be an awfully long day for students, that some sort of meals would be provided. So are meals going to be provided with this? And those are my two questions. Busing and meals.
Okay, I, okay, I can answer both of those.
Go ahead, Mr. McCollum, yes.
In the past, we have, oh, thank you. In the past, we have provided transportation to an extent. What we're hoping, it got, I'm not going to lie, it got kind of hairy trying to get kids there three times a week. By going with the remote version for two days a week, we feel like we can then get kids from one side of town, let's Troy, or one day a week, and try to breed it. In the past, the, the site, the students will get there in time, and the instructors are very, they're very open to the students while they're in class, being able to have dinner. So we have been able to provide meals for those students prior to their, or during their instruction.
Thank you.
So the answer is yes, meals will be provided, and yes, there will be busing?
We will do transportation as best as humanly possible for our students within Tucson Unified School District. We, we do have a white fleet of our own in career and technical education. We did, the last few years, run routes to be able to pick up kids and bring them to the sites for extended day. Now, for students outside of Tucson Unified School District, it is commonly known, because we are part of the J-10, that we must offer our program county-wide. We do not provide transportation stay for a student from, for students, or each of our school students to come. They must provide their own transportation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCollum. Do we have any other speakers? No, okay. All right. This is just an information item. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, so we're going to reconvene to the regular meeting and then go straight into the public hearing for the next informational item. Presentation of the Tucson Unified School District Virtual Academy Instructional Model and Public Hearing pursuant to ARS 15901.08B.
Excuse, excuse me, Ms. Counts?
Yes.
I just want to clarify the, the email address that was stated publicly
Yes.
or earlier. It is publichearingvitalacad@tusd1.org. It's not virtual.
Yeah.
It was just misspelled when they provided us the email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Trujillo?
Yes. In the spirit of the previous item, we of course are proposing an alternative instructional model for all of the families of the district that want to remain 100% remote. And as required, And as required, like with CTE, we have to facilitate a minimum of two public hearings. Tonight is the first of two. Like the previous item, no governing board action is being sought tonight. The second public hearing has been scheduled for July 20th. A couple of important notes for the public. The governing board has already approved funding only for the staffing of this model, but the governing board has not approved the model itself. So tonight, there will be no discussion of dollars because the board has already appropriated money out of ESER, ESER II, for staffing costs and startup costs for the Tucson Unified Virtual Academy. I just wanted to provide that clarification for those in the viewing public who might be questioning why we haven't included any financials in this presentation. It's because those financials have already been approved, and tonight is strictly related to the model. This is largely the same presentation that the governing board saw on June 22nd, but Mr. Sanchez, who will be presenting for us tonight, Regional Assistant Superintendent Sanchez, added more specific detailing around scheduling because that's what we're here to examine. And of course, he will be returning next week for part two, the second part of this hearing. With that, I'll turn it over to our Regional Assistant Superintendent for Arroyo Chico, Region Three, Mr. Richard Sanchez.
Good evening, President Counts, governing board members, Dr. Trujillo. I am joined this evening with Assistant Superintendent Florrie Hewitt to present on the Tucson Unified Virtual Academy Instructional Model. This is the first of two public meetings. As you know, in previous board meetings, we were able to provide you with some information around the instructional model. We will be doing that again this evening and again at our next board meeting. We know that the remote education needs to be a viable option for our parents and students. We currently have over 800 students interested in this instructional model, ranging from grades K through 12. Next slide, please. So we, as stated in the previous board meeting, I want to get a little bit more in detail about this instructional model and how we came to be able to develop it. Once again, we worked with our district lobbyists to try to understand the Arizona Department of Education protocols for remote instruction, in particular, a House Bill 2862 that allowed for districts to be able to incorporate remote and in-person instruction. House Bill 2862 allows for a combination of multiple instructional delivery platforms, such as a direct model where you have students who are attending remote with a teacher of record, project-based, independent, and mastery-based kind of work. And those all can be integrated within a instruction model. I'm going to be highlighting two of those particular delivery systems for TUBA. And last but not least, we certainly worked with local, state, and nationwide about how various districts are going to be handling remote instruction moving forward, and we're able to receive a lot of great detail from our brother-sister districts with N-Pima County, and we really get good feedback from them on our model as well. Next slide, please. So just a couple of things about this instructional model. We plan, through your board approval after the next board meeting, to begin this model in the 2122 school year. This will allow our remote students, who are interested in learning remote, to be able to still remain currently enrolled in their current school while participating in this new instructional model, which we call TUBA. For the K6 students, they will be receiving a direct instructional model. So on the previous slide, I noted direct. Direct is defined for us in which a teacher and a student, students will be assigned to a particular teacher and have a teacher of record, in which they will be receiving direct instruction from that teacher throughout that instructional day. Also, they will be following the exact same instructional calendar as their in-person peers. In the seventh through 12th model, it is what we call a mastery-based instructional model. This is where students will be following a schedule. So it will be a six-period schedule in which they will follow to make sure they're getting all their core classes, along with their electives, and they will be receiving support from a certified teacher. But they will also be participating in the Apex Platform in order then to, for them to progress through that Apex Platform through a mastery-based program in which they will be able to show evidence of mastery of the standards through various ways to do that, including direct instruction, including support, including assessments, and then they will matriculate through that particular platform to receive credit and grades. All students will be following an instructional schedule. So our elementary students will be following an 8:30 to 2:30 schedule, and then our secondary students will be following an 8:30 to 3:30 schedule. Within that schedule, they will be following a very structured instructional day, including making sure at the elementary level that they are receiving ELA, math, as well as social studies and support in science, and of course, enrichment activities. At the secondary level, they will be receiving six core classes, the four cores being English, math, science, social studies, along with two electives, making sure that they are fulfilling their graduation requirements if they are a high school student. We are currently in the process of staffing this particular program through the approval of ESER dollars. We have hired all of our operational staffing, that being a site coordinator, an office manager, a registrar, and a counselor. And we are also in the process of finalizing our teachers. As we know that the number of students continue to grow in this particular program, we will continue to make sure that we have teachers that are assigned to meet the needs of these students via our consensus agreement. And last but not least, the location has been designated at Santa Rita High School. But just once again, for the public, it is only located at Santa Rita High School for the supports staff that will be there. The students and the teachers, of course, will be either learning or teaching from home. Next slide. So a couple of things about this particular instructional model, I want to make sure that the public are well aware, as well as the board, is that this is an instructional model. It is not a school. Board members, as you know, if we were going to add it as a school, there's a certain protocol that we would have to follow for that. We feel that in order to really make sure that our students feel connected to their current school, this instructional model is the best approach for that. And thus, attendance will be taken at the current school of enrollment for our students, allowing the students to stay enrolled in that current school, participate in extracurricular activities, clubs, sports, if they choose to. Remote students will follow the exact same instructional day and calendar as their in-person peers. And last but not least, once again, participate in those extracurricular activities and events at their current site. Next slide, please. I reviewed this slide with you previously, but I think it really does articulate the student experience. So students who choose to participate in this instructional model will make sure that they are provided all of the technology needed in order to receive a robust educational experience remotely, including the technology device itself, any hotspots, and any other supplemental materials that they are going to need, whether it be digital in format or, if needed, via textbook. We will make sure that they are following, once again, that instructional schedule, that they are completing synchronous and asynchronous assignments, that they are engaged in the same curriculum standards and instructional pacing as their in-person peers, participate in all district and state-approved assessments as their in-person peers. Of course, for any students who need that additional support, whether they be ex-ed or have a 504, we want to make sure that we are providing those services, as well as ELL services and having a counselor on staff. And then last but not least, it's worth repeating that they will be able to participate in those extracurriculars at their current site. Next slide, please. The teacher experience. It's important for our teachers who are going to be participating and facilitating this instruction that we are providing them the technology devices needed, including, if needed, hotspots, and of course, the instructional resources, whether they be instructional resources in the digital platform, once again, or being able to reference instructional resources during that direct instructional period will be very important for them to be able to show, screen share. They, once again, will follow an instructional schedule that they will be assigned. They will complete all required tasks associated with their in-person peers. They will facilitate all the same kind of curriculum standards and follow the same pacing calendar. They will be in charge of proctoring all of the district and state-approved assessments. And once again, it was important when we met with our TEA group and certainly our ELI group that we are making sure that they are following the TEA-approved consensus agreement, with last caps. And last but not least, that they are utilizing our new learning management system. Next slide. So this is, once again, for our public. We've had a large number of students, parents, who are current students, and I'd like to really say, been really encouraged by many students who are returning back to the district because of this possible instructional model. They've been able to reach out to us via the website, via our email, and also our contact information, so that way we may be able to provide them the information needed for this instructional model. Next slide. And at our last board meeting, Ms. Leinhardt described some of the things that we've been doing out in our public sector to make sure that we are communicating this instructional model to our parents and our students. And she and the communications team have been doing a wonderful job and have been continuing to do that throughout the month of July. With that being said, I believe that concludes this presentation. I believe the next slide is with questions.
Board members, questions? Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Ms. Counts. Mr. Sanchez, I was wondering, I know you said in the presentation that students who are in the Virtual Academy will absolutely have an opportunity to participate in clubs or athletics, and I'm wondering how logistically that's going to work if, you know, they're all getting out at the same time. I remember in high school, like, sports were pretty much right after school ended, you know what I mean? And so to have to travel from their home to the school site, like, I see a lot of difficulties with that. And also, I was wondering if you could speak to opportunities for these students to participate in art and music classes virtually?
Sure. So I will certainly take the first question. Ms. Hewitt's joining me today to take on that second question for you. As far as sports go, what we're trying to do is try to align our secondary bell schedule with what we're seeing as far as a theme with all of the secondary sites. And most secondary sites are concluding around that same time, within 10 to 15 minutes. Yes, it will be incumbent upon the student, if they'd like to participate in sports, to get there, to that location, to be able to participate. We certainly want to make sure that we're reaching out to our brick-and-mortar sites to make sure that they're aware that there are students who want to participate in these extracurricular activities. We've had this process in the past with students who either were homeschooled or homebound for a reason and wanted to participate in extracurricular activities, and been able to work with those individual students to make that happen. As far as the curriculum with specials and so forth, Ms. Hewitt, would you like to address that question? I don't know if she's there. So I think I can take this one and say that, right now, what we are offering is, we plan, we have an advertisement right now for an arts teacher to make sure that arts is available. We also have a music appreciation opportunity for students who want to participate in that. And I want to be very clear to our public, music appreciation is very different than participating in band, orchestra, or still drum kind of approach. We are not able to offer that kind of robust opportunity at this point in time, but certainly to understand music appreciation is something of an opportunity for our students in that content. But we also have a robust course offerings elective-wise via our Apex Model that will allow students to participate in health and PE and other CTE kind of programs as well.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Sure.
And we will be revisiting this at the next meeting, Dr. Trujillo, or in August?
That's correct, July 20th.
July 20th.
So again, any members of the public who, for whatever reason, missed this first hearing, we're back at it, July 20th, where hopefully there'll probably be some more speakers.
Okay. And we have a few speakers tonight. Thank you.
During the audience call, the board president or board clerk will recognize speakers and maintain order by setting appropriate limitations. When addressing the board, the speaker should begin by stating their name and topic. Speakers are encouraged to be brief. The maximum speaking time is two minutes. You will be unmuted by the webinar host and will be cued with the phrase, "Begin now, please." Individuals attending the meeting via Zoom and/or addressing the board through written comments should observe rules of propriety, good conduct, and refrain from impertinent or slanderous remarks. TUSD serves students from all ages, so speakers should be aware that children may be listening, watching, or watching the meeting. And our only comment is from Lillian Fox.
Begin now, please.
I always have questions. I have two questions. What are the, what are the standards, are the rules going to be for class sizes for teachers who are teaching these remote classes? Teaching remote is not easy. So are you going to enforce some rules on how big their classes can be? And then the other question is, or would you rather I wait and ask the second question afterwards? I think I'll ask the second question now. Will teachers be able to see student screens and interact with them? Because when TUSD was doing virtual loan teaching for the last two years, teachers couldn't access their student screens. Sunnyside can, my niece in South Carolina can. There's software available so that a teacher can interact directly with the student's screen and see exactly what their problem is.
So I'll be happy to address those questions. The first question regarding the classroom cap size, we will be following the exact same in-person consensus agreement that their colleagues in the in-person brick-and-mortar model will be following when it comes to class rosters and that particular size. Now, that class size varies depending on the grade, but we will make sure that we are following those exact same numbers. As far as activating the student's screen, I probably need a little bit more clarity that we have an instructional model in which we will have parameters for what is expected by the teacher and for the student in the participation of remote. We will have a handbook that will be readily available to our parents, our students, and our teachers regarding what protocols we will be following regarding this remote classroom environment, and making sure that we do have access to communicating with students directly or via chat, utilizing breakout rooms, and certainly the expectations we have of them to participate in the class throughout the entire day.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. And that is the final comment.
Okay, thank you. All right. We are going to reconvene the regular meeting, and that leads us to item 16.1, Dr. Trujillo, reappointment of a community member to the Tucson Unified Technology Oversight Committee.
Yes, governing board members, President Counts, members of the governing board, we are here to recommend Mr. Harry McGregor for a reappointment to a two-year term that would be expiring July 12, 2023. His resume is readily available for review as a current member of the Technology Oversight Committee. It's posted online for public accessibility as well.
So moved?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Grealva seconds. Board members, comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Congratulations to, I'm sorry, what was the member's name?
Mr. Harry McGregor.
Mr. Harry McGregor. Mr. Harry McGregor. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Item 17, Dr. Treheo, designation of the Tucson Police Department and the Pima County Sheriff's Department as sole source providers of off-duty event coverage.
President Counts, board members, a few weeks ago, we presented, along with purchasing, a list of vendors that have been designated as sole source providers of the products and services that the district is in need of for the purposes of designating them as sole source providers for the purpose of documenting that with regard to the statutory required procurement process that requires us to go out for bids for goods and services in a fair and transparent process. A service provider on that list was listed as the Tucson Police Department and the Pima County Sheriff's Department as sole source providers for event coverage for outside of the school day events facilitated by the district. And the governing board members, a few governing board members expressed concerns about the presence of police on campuses and asked us to come back with the item to talk a little bit more explicitly about the feasibility of having school safety absorb some of these duties, the extent to which liability could be increased if we don't have police officers at some of these events, and what the feasibility would be for a third-party security team, privately contracted security to absorb some of these duties. So I think it's, Rob, did you put together this presentation or?
I did put together a few, a few slides.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to Rob. Him and I have been working on this, along with Nicole Lowery, who's also on this call. And then, of course, from a purchasing perspective, we have Diana, or Diana Kirfert, but I think now we're kind of moving into the sort of why the officers versus any purchasing concerns. However, Diana is available if there are any, any purchasing concerns. With that, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Dr. Treheo, and good evening, board members. Next slide, please, Jean. So between the, the last discussion of this and today, I got some more information about what we, what we have said historically about why law enforcement is used for sole source, as a sole source for some purposes. And here are some of the reasons that have been documented in the past. Number one is that, is the staffing of school safety, being able to provide service for all of the schools after school. And I spoke with Mr. Vildesea, who told me that there are about five officers available in the evenings. So that would definitely be insufficient, just thinking of a football season, just as an example, to provide coverage for events that are happening in the evenings. So that would, that's, that's one big issue. Also, private security guards don't respond to crowd control. And you see the other reasons there, law enforcement's authority and direct contact if there's, if there's, with radio contact with other officers if something big happens. Those are the, some of the reasons that have been cited by the purchasing department in the past. One of the big things that I found out in the intervening time is, because the question was raised, why not private security, why not explore that more? Private security will not go into the road and do traffic control. So that leaves our, those five officers that we might have available to do traffic control. That's a major concern for me, and I don't know if Nicole wants to weigh in on that, Nicole Lowery, in terms of risk, but that's, that's something that, a gap that we would, that we would need to fill in order to, to have safe events, ingress and egress from, from graduations, from games and such, since the private security will not do that work. Anything you wanted to add there, Nicole?
No, I think that sums it up perfectly, that it is increased, it increases our liability when we have mass groups exiting. And we would need some way to get people off of our campuses safely.
Okay. Next slide, please, Jean. I also took a look at, at what the actual use was back in our last relatively normal year of 1819. And as you can see, Pima County Sheriff's Department was used only by Sabino for those events. And anything that is a, a student council approval, they approve the use of, of the officers. Next slide, please. This was the larger expense for the off-duty management program for TPD in 1819. All the high schools used them for graduation interscholastics and again, events that student council approved, student council approved for that expense. So these are the reasons and the usage, again, for, for myself and risk management. I think one of the, the big issues for us is that kind of gap that we would have with traffic control. We would need to figure out how to supplement those generally five officers that are available, TUSD school safety officers, in order to at least cover that portion of, of what, what law enforcement currently does for us.
Yes, Ms. Gruhova.
Yeah. So the question that I have is, when I've been to events, like games, the officers are usually, like if it's a basketball game, they're inside the facility. If it is a football game, they're standing out near, like the entrance kind of area in general. Sometimes they're walking around, sometimes they're not. But if really what we're asking for is assistance with traffic, would there be a necessity to have, is there a minimum amount of hours that the district has to have officers present? Because for traffic control, I can understand that. I think more of the concern is at events, you know, with students in the community as opposed to, you know, directing traffic.
Ms. Gruhova, up to this point, there hasn't been any direction or, or, you know, restriction for having the off-duty officers do only one part of the, of the job that needs to be done for those events. So that's why you would see them, you know, covering inside or at entrances and such.
But is there a minimum number of hours if you ask for off-duty? I mean, because I think it, we used to use off-duty officers at teen court when it first started, like in 95 and 96. And if I remember right, it's like, if you only have a handful of hours, then you're less likely to get those slots filled versus if you have more hours. And so I'm just wondering, is there a minimum for schools or is it just, you know, it's the football game? And so you show up at the beginning and you're here until the end? Or do we not have that information because it's kind of unique to every school?
I do not, I don't know if Ms. Kirfert might have information about a minimum usage.
I can just comment on that if you would like.
Sure.
That I do understand that there is a minimum number. And like Ms. Gruhova explained, the more hours, the more likely you are to get the position filled. So if we just had an hour slot at the end of the game for sheer traffic control, it would be less likely to be filled than if we did a four-hour period where we had coverage at the game, followed by crowd control and traffic control at the end of the game. That's my understanding.
And as far as I know, there isn't a requirement of a minimum number of hours, but usually, you know, the schools send us the information on the time period that they want. They've talked to TPD or to the Sheriff's Department. There's an app, or I don't want to say app, but there's a program that they go into and that you, you make those requests and then they're provided with the information. So it's really based on the school asking for someone for the entire time. If, if that was something we'd want to change, then we'd need to work with the schools to say you only, you know, can hire them for these certain periods of time.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Treheo.
Yeah, I want to thank Rob for putting this information together. It's very, very helpful. So I'm, I'm muted. Is there anybody else?
Now you're good.
Is everybody good? Okay. I want to thank Rob for putting all this information together. I, I hear the concerns about officers interacting with our students, and I understand how that's applicable during the school day. And I understand that. And I understand board member concerns and community concerns about having uniformed officers inside of schools, elementary, middle, during an instructional day, during a Monday through Friday, and whether or not that that makes the school any safer or any less safe or that we should be investing that money in counseling and social workers, all very, very strong arguments and totally understandable. But where I deviate is now where we're in the night, and it's a nighttime event, and we're no longer dealing with kids. And now we're dealing primarily with unknown members of the public who are in their 30s, 40s, and 50s. We don't know if they've been drinking. We don't know if they're excited, especially in rivalry game situations where people are getting very, very emotional and excited, whether it's a, it's a Sabino versus Saguaro, packed house. But what we do know, and, and this is just my experience as a principal and even here working in TUSD, the adults coming in from the community don't have the same respect for TUSD authority that students and employees do. And students and employees will do what you ask them to do because of our supervisory authority. That kind of stops with a general member of the public that doesn't want to respond to our direction. And I think we're going to be putting, it only takes one incident. I think we're going to be putting our own employees in a very, very difficult situation. They'll already be understaffed. As we verified with school safety, we're really going to only have between five to seven officers available on any given Friday night. That might put us at one officer per school. We can probably bootress that and strengthen that with maybe hiring some private security, but again, they won't do anything with traffic. They won't go into the stands. So I, I think that, I understand the concerns about police interactions with students. We've heard the focus groups. I think this is different. I think this is a district charged with securing an environment at night with adults, with people coming in from the community that we don't have any ID requirements on, that are not subject to our authority. They're not our employees and they're not our students. I think that's a different realm of responsibility than having an SRO conversation about students and putting them in schools, which I understand, and we've had that discussion. I just think that this is different. And I think to not authorize the usage of TPD or Pima County Sheriff's Department to secure our nighttime events, especially large-scale stuff like graduations and, and these nighttime football games that can get into the several hundreds, if not a couple of thousand people attending, I think makes us a little bit less safe and, and kind of lessens our ability to totally secure the environment.
Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. So at our last meeting, sorry, can you, Michelle? Thank you. At our last meeting, when this issue came up, I thought I had made it clear that, like, you know, I wanted to at least have the board have the opportunity to review in a real way alternatives to having police at after-school events. I'm not surprised that nothing is shown here in regards to that, but I am pretty disappointed that that request was ignored, especially given that, like on the item, it reads that law enforcement personnel from city and county agencies are not required at TUSD events unless a street or roadway is closed, in which case a permit is required as well as an off-duty officer. And I think we're framing this in a way that is not really fair because it's not just football games that we're talking about here, it's graduations, it's prom. And I think the students are loud and clear in their directive to us that they do not want law enforcement at these events. And I think we need to not just hear them, but act through them and honor them by finding an alternative. I wonder, Mr. Ross, what, what, and actually, where does our liability end when it comes to these after-school events? We hear a lot about like traffic control, but once someone leaves the campus, are we really liable for whatever happens? Like, you know what I mean? Like if they're leaving and there's like a lot of traffic and they're already outside of our campus, are, like, can you explain our liability on that? And if it's just a traffic control issue, which I hear from the administration, like that's the main reasons, perhaps we could find an alternative to security to, to deal with that.
Ms. Shaw, in terms of liability, if we are causing basically the congestion, for example, an event at, at a school and, you know, the, the cars are all leaving at the same time and there's traffic going on the main road, it would be the district's responsibility to kind of control that flow out so that it doesn't cause a problem in the main, in the main street. So that's, that, and Nicole can, can jump in there on that too, but that's, that's where we could be partly, we would be partly responsible if we didn't reasonably control the, the people coming from our property onto, onto the other streets of the district. That, you know, we, we, if, if we weren't controlling that and there's an incident, somebody's walking across the street and gets hit, then the district would likely be named in, in a suit there for not, for, for being negligent in letting people leave without control.
Okay. I understand that, but it seems to me like if you, you know, go by Tucson High or any high school after, when school gets out, there's always busy traffic and there's always like congestion around our high schools or middle schools when they, when they get let out, you know what I mean? And so I just think that's a non-issue.
I, I would agree with board member Shaw that release time is a non-issue because the students are under our supervision. So of course, the student recognizes an assistant principal, recognizes a security or, or a campus safety monitor that says, hey, don't jaywalk, don't run across the street. You do it, we can consequence you, we can call your parents. There's an element of control and authority that applies to daytime release that is totally different at night when you're dealing with somebody in their 40s or 50s who doesn't recognize your authority and is being rowdy and is being unruly and being disruptive. And that applies to the parking lot as well in situations where there's road rage or somebody's in a hurry to get home. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to pulling this item and, you know, we can come back. And I certainly don't want Board Clerk Shaw thinking that, you know, we're, we're not open to, to pricing out what some alternatives is going to be. It's going to be, we can come with some cost estimates to train the whole school safety team on traffic control and safety. We can provide you estimates for hiring more school safety. That's more administrative spending. We've heard from the public, they don't like that, but we can certainly take a look at that. One avenue we did look at is private security companies between the last meeting and tonight. We haven't found one that's going to reduce, do traffic. I mean, that, that's a, that's a remedy we did look at, and they're just not going to do traffic and they're not going to get in and do the, the necessary work to secure stands in an emergency situation. So that's kind of left us with, with this recommendation here. Is it urgent? You know, can we come back if the board wants more information? We can certainly do that. We can, we can put more of a, a cost-related sort of presentation together before the board considers if that's, if that's the collective will of the board.
Dr. Ravi.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. Actually, I had a question for Ms. Shaw. You had mentioned your comments that we've heard loud and clear from students that they don't, and, and strong majorities don't want to have, you know, police officers at events. And I want to make sure I didn't miss any information because I don't remember seeing that. And when we actually looked at this issue in our schools in February, the student surveys actually supported having officers in our schools. And so I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing information because you stated that, that we've heard from students loud and clear that they don't want officers, but I haven't heard from students loud and clear about this.
Thank you for asking that, Dr. Ravi. I mean, I have had students reach out to me personally, also the forum that happened last year. I know that the survey kind of gave contradictory information than what the students, which were like maybe 50 students or so in that forum about SROs, the majority of them seemed to be against the SROs. And also tonight, or this evening, we had a group of students, I believe they were middle schoolers who started a collective called After School Anarchy. They were out here protesting. One of their demands was to have police removed from schools in general and also proms, football games, et cetera. Ms. Counts?
Yes.
Dr. Treheo, I was wondering if, if we do have this presentation come to the board again, if we can see maybe in the last 10 years, any if we can see, maybe in the last 10 years, any incidents, after-school incidents that happened during some of these events that warranted a police, police involvement, you know, what I mean? Like, if there was, like, a car accident, or someone in a stand got rowdy. I would like to see that data. If we're talking, like, it happens so often, then I would like to see data that reflects that.
So I can't promise that we can put that together. We can, we can certainly look at it. I know when I tried to address previous and other requests for information of this nature, most recently, we fulfilled a, I think it was two or three years ago, we fulfilled an information request on incidents with ex-ed students, and it had to do with restraint. And we just didn't have the reporting capability to go back that far. You know, we'll certainly look at it. We're looking at events that have taken place outside of the school day, which means that our documentation may not be the best going back a decade. But we certainly can, can take a look and see what records we have going back as far as we can to, you know, bring that information to the governing board. This is not an urgent item right now. I don't, I don't want to press people for a vote. If you want more information, we can certainly do that. If you want more of a cost-centric, you know, in terms of, okay, so what's it, what's it going to cost to get everybody trained on traffic and safety? What's it going to cost to double the size of school safety? You know, how much overtime would it be? Do we hire seasonal school safety employees? I mean, we can, we can cost all that out if the board wants to see something more, like, cost-related before it's asked to make a decision. But my rec, our administrative recommendation isn't, isn't going to change.
Okay. Dr. Ravi, and then I'd like to hear from Ms. Luna Rose and Ms. Grijalva on what, some quickly, just thoughts if you wanted to postpone, or what you're, or you're ready to vote. I'm, I'm kind of torn on it, so I'd like to hear where the board majority stands. Dr. Ravi.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. And I went back to our, my documents that I downloaded from our February 23rd board meeting, and we looked at student surveys. Again, we had almost 2,500 students complete the survey, almost 2,500 students, and about 80% of them agreed and, or strongly agreed that having SRO in my school makes me feel safe. And so, I mean, I hear what Dr. Treheal is saying in terms of, you know, having members of the public at these events. And we're not talking about senior students and, and TUSD families. We're talking about events open to the general public. And so if the rest of the governing board is ready, I'm ready to move the item.
Okay. Ms. Luna Rose or Ms. Grijalva, did you have feelings or thoughts you'd like to share?
Ms. Counts, I, I am not in favor of increasing the size of our school safety. And so if we're talking for limited events where the community at large is coming on to our school grounds, not prom, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that there's, if there's events where we have a lot of just students, and I think that our school staff personnel can deal with those. But if we're talking about, like, really big basketball games, football games, where we have, you know, large schools coming together, that to me makes sense. Because I have been at games where members of the public have, you know, kind of started threatening each other, threatening other students, that kind of stuff. And so I do know, because I saw it, where they went to go get an officer to come and help. It hasn't happened. I've only seen it twice in 19 years. So it doesn't happen often. But I, I do think that it's important in those aspects to have some school personnel there. I do want to make sure that this is something that's utilized across all of our high schools, and that it's not isolated to, you know, South and, South and West Side schools, stuff like that. I mean, I think that that information is valuable, because if it's something that add, because it's a, it's a concern that we have for the district and liability and for safety, then that should be something, I think, is utilized across the board at high schools. But I do want to know some more information about how often it's utilized in middle schools, because I do think that that's something that, you know, if we're dealing with our community coming to middle schools, for the most part, you don't have people that are not associated with the middle school. I don't, I don't go to middle school events unless one of my children is going to be performing, or, you know, at a game. I'm just not going to show up, in general, to, you know, a middle school for some athletic event. But high schools, I see that happening more often. And we know we have alumni, and we're very proud to kind of, you know, welcome them all back. But I do want to make sure that our community at large is safe when they come to our schools. And so that's sort of where I am. I don't, if there's a majority that wants to go ahead and move forward, I would, I would vote for it, provided that we exclude from options for outside school safety, you know, to those kind of larger athletic events and not necessarily prom and student, student-run events. I think that, I mean, those events that are just for school, for other students at the school, that doesn't make sense to me. But I'm also happy to wait and get more information. So it really, I'm up to whatever the majority of the board wants to do.
Okay. So I'm also sort of in the middle, I'll be honest. And I hear both sides. And I think as a board and also as a parent, I mean, our job is to make sure that our students are safe. I mean, they're, they're still children, so we have to guide them and make those recommend, you know, make the best recommendations. And I don't want to negate the kids. I really appreciated them being out there tonight. We could hear them earlier. And I really, really appreciate that they're out there expressing their, their thoughts and voicing their opinions. It's, it's necessary, and it's, and they should be heard, because this is their district, and we are serving them and their parents. But maybe, I know Dr. Ravi's ready to move, but I think just for the public's sake, if we could have some, I know, Dr. Treheal, you said you couldn't go back 10 years. But if we've got some FOIA requests that we can pull from to maybe ease some, you know, some worries of how many incidents at middle schools or high schools, because Ms. Grijalva's right. I mean, I'm a middle school student in, or I was, a middle school parent. And so I'm not hanging out over there unless I'm going to an event. But when my daughter goes into high school, I'm definitely going to be heading there. And that's where we see the bigger community come into play. So if we could have just some extra, you know, I, I'd hate for this to go on for, like, meetings and meetings. So maybe the, the next time it comes up, that's like our final, like, that's it. Then we have to make a decision then. But I'd really like to see that information for the public.
Yeah. And we can, we certainly do that. Like I mentioned, it's not urgent. You know, football season doesn't start tomorrow. School safety has a firm grasp on the 2020 graduations. Those are small enough where we're handling that. So this is not, this is not something that we need. I do think that Mrs. Grijalva makes a good point, and something that I'll add when I bring this back, maybe the, the, the middle ground is us getting more prescriptive and saying, okay, Tucson High versus Pueblo, those are two large schools. Tucson High versus Choya, those are large schools. Maybe that needs the officer, but maybe Santa Rita versus Catalina doesn't, right? And proms, we don't need, we, we reduce the events that we typically are using these officers at, and we just kind of restrict it to these large-scale events. You know, I think we're open to that. We hear the board loud and clear. There's concerns, you know, and I respect that. But, you know, and I hear an acknowledgement of the administration's concerns about safety. So I'm in favor of just pulling it and bringing it back and providing that additional information pursuant to what we heard from Board Clerk Shaw. We'll absolutely go back and try to pull up any incidents that we can, provide that information to the board, so that there's, and the public, so that they can see that, you know, from time to time, yes, that's something I like discussing, because it's not necessarily a positive thing to be talking about. But, but if it's necessary, we will, you know, kind of talk about some of the incidents that we've seen. I certainly don't want the public thinking we're not safe. But if, if that's what's needed here, we certainly will do that.
Okay. So I'm happy that we're pulling it, but I agree with Ms. Luna Rose. I don't want it to dominate multiple sessions. And also, what I am interested in is having it be more prescriptive, to use your word, and so that there isn't any gray area for, okay, we're gonna, we're going to have, even if it's an event of 600, if it's a West Side school, you know, and it's a 600-person event for an East Side school, but the West Side school. So something that where there's, like, metrics and, like, really clearly defined instances where we will have those officers that are uniform. And I do think it's important, the point Ms. Grijalva made, that it is much different if it's our own students, it's a school-centered event. I don't think, where I have seen people get out of control and get, and get violent, not necessarily in TUSD, but with other high school events I've been at, is when there is, you know, rival schools, and there's just, you know, it's heated, and it's, it can get, it can get scary. It can get bad. My husband was stabbed in high school at a football game. So it does happen. But that's, that's what interests me, is just kind of having some really clear metrics and, and prescription around that, that is uniform.
Ms. Counts?
Yes.
I just want to be really clear that a lot, the incidents that I've seen at our schools were with other high schools. It wasn't another TUSD school versus another TUSD school, for the most part, in the, in the two situations that I saw. It was a really competitive game, which is why I was there. And it was, you know, like, energy's very high. But where I was talking about specifically is, like, if we're, if it's, we're making a standard all high schools, that's okay. I'm okay with that. I just don't want it to be, like, you know, our bigger schools are going to have more people. And so my thought would be, is if the argument is, we want a safe environment, but we're also going to have a lot more people, a lot more traffic, then we're going to need more bodies to help everyone get safely off campus. That makes sense to me. Like, a middle school event, I, I don't, I don't know that we're going to draw that kind of crowd. And do we need to have a uniformed officer at, like, a small middle school fiesta? I would argue no. So I think that, just kind of coming back with, maybe talking to some principals to find out when they utilize officers. And, and I think that that information would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. My computer just died, so, but I'm still on, and everybody can hear me. And, or do I need to re-log back in with a charged computer? Is it fine for me to just be on audio? Okay, I'm just going to stay.
Yes, you're just, you're frozen.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm here. Okay, so let's, we're going to bring that back. And we're going to move on to our last item for the night, the consideration of return to in-person governing board meetings. Dr. Treheal.
Yeah, this is, you know, there's no presentation here. This is just a, a straight recommendation coming from the administration, you know, just given where we're at with what's come out of the governor's office, given where we're at with the rate of vaccines here in Pima County, given where we're at with what the county stance has been and what the city of Tucson stance has been with regard to masks, with regard to COVID-19 mitigation. We're proposing that we're back, that the governing board just come back live and in person on August 10th, starting with the first school board meeting of the new school year. That gives the governing board office and our communications team, of course, Miguel and Mary, in working with Yolanda to get everything reconfigured. By the way, they did a fantastic job setting all this up for the period that we've been remote. And I'd like to give them, you know, the next several weeks to try to bring us back to just live in-person call to the audience, regular school board style. So that's our recommendation to match the opening of the school year.
Okay.
Ms. Counts?
Yes, Ms. Grijalva.
Are we going to have any mitigation as far as, like, will there be any plexiglass around speaker? I'm just going by what we've talked about in, in our, the Board of Supervisors meetings, that there wouldn't be any plexiglass around the dais, because everyone has indicated that they're fully vaccinated that would be sitting there. But since we are not going to be asking people for their vaccination status, if you will, when they come into a public meeting, how are we going to, what, what, if anything, are we going to do to ensure that our community is safe? So we talked a little bit about, like, if you're unvaccinated, then there would be an area, I'm, I'm just saying for our Board of Supervisor meetings, that there would be an area that, you know, they still might stagger seating in some areas, just depending. But I just wanted to know if the proposal is just, we open the doors and that's that, or if we're going to try to prepare anything?
Well, our mitigation will be that we're going to have spacing. So we're going to be sitting our chairs, you know, six feet apart. Masks, of course, are going to be recommended. You know, we can't really get in there and mandate. We're going to have hand sanitizer widely available. The normal capacity of Duffy is something like 200. We're not going to run 200. We're going to space chairs six feet apart. So first come, first served. And Duffy will probably, six feet apart, only accommodate maybe 60 or 70 people. We'd like to work with the governing board on their thoughts on plexiglass, whether they want it or not. And I think the next three or four weeks gives us that opportunity to do so. But I wanted to speak to the general mitigation strategies for just the general public coming in. I think we get into some difficult territory when we start setting up sections for vaccinated versus non-vaccinated. We've run into that with some parents that have asked us to do that inside of classrooms as well. So I just think that we, we implement the widely recommended mitigation strategies of spacing, encouraging masks, making hand sanitizer available in every row that we would set up here in Duffy, and of course, have cleaning protocol after every speaker at call to the audience. And that would be our generally recommended protocol. And we're going to get more into that next week when we talk about general mitigation strategies in our July 20th presentation on COVID mitigation for the whole district. So you'll get a lot more details on that, because we did categorize governing board meetings as events. And you'll see that show up again next week when we're covering events and mitigation for events.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to know if there was going to be any mitigation, or if we were just going to open the doors. So thank you for the information.
And just really quickly, Dr. Treheal, I'd like to be pretty clear about where I stand with my fully vaccinated self that is unmasked in this board meeting, and we're far apart. And so I do support the, the very logical, you know, distancing. But I, the whole, anything that is not, that is really just for show and is not evidence-based, I don't think that we need to go there. You know, we've done a lot, we've done a lot in this district for mitigation. And there has to get to a point where we just need to be science-based both ways. So that's what I support. Okay. Future meeting dates and agendas, agenda items. Dr. Treheal.
Yes. So next week, the big feature item is July, July 20th. That's our formal presentation of COVID mitigation recommendations in all areas of the district, 20, for '21, '22. Included in that will be details on the mitigation efforts for governing board meetings as they return live on August 10th. And that's our, our big item coming up next week. We have the second and final public hearings for Tucson Virtual Academy and our alternative models for career and technical education. So again, I want to encourage all of our governing, all of our viewers out there, if you didn't get a chance to comment, we're back again next week for the second round of hearings. And that's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Good night.
Have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you.